April 15th and it is four o'clock PM. We are convened at the Pro State School Board of Education meeting at 280 West, 940 North in Provo, Utah. And we'll begin with a roll call and Jennifer Partridge, Board President.
Gina Hill is Board Vice President.
Melanie Hall, Board Member.
Lisa Boyce, Board Member.
Meg Van Wagenen, Board Member.
Emily Harrison, Board Member.
Terri McCabe, Board Member.
Devon Daly, Business Administrator.
Wendy Dow, Superintendent.
Okay, thank you. And we want to welcome our other guests and people who are going to be here tonight to present to us. And also to thank our tech department who helps us with all of YouTube and everything and our wonderful administrative assistant Bonnie who gets this all set up for us. Do we have a motion to start our study session? Can we start our study session? Okay, motion made by Board Member Boyce. Do we have a second?
I'll take it.
Second by Board Member Harrison. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we are now in our study session. Okay, we are going to begin with our Board Member training with Lisa.
All right. Well, this is just board responsibilities from, and I, the resources that Gina had think were both the handbook, the board handbook that everyone has as well as USBA's kind of elaboration on it. And so I'm just going to actually just quickly read through it. I think, and then I'll tell you what stood out to me. And then if you have any thoughts to add, I think that would be great. It basically says the board has powers assigned by law. And I did actually read through 53G for that section 402, but then there were a few other sections that led me to, and I thought probably in your free time, you should read through the whole thing. It was pretty interesting to actually read through the whole scope of the law there. But number one is to keep confidential issues that are discussed in executive sessions and avoid conflicts of interest when you like try to seek advantage from serving on the board in inappropriate ways. The next one is to refrain from promoting an individual agenda, but to just study issues and make decisions in the best interest of the district as a whole. And I really do appreciate that so far in my time on the board, I have felt like people have come to the table to say what's best for kids. Like we may come with different perspectives on things, but we're, I appreciate that we really don't, I don't feel like we're doing this, but it's just a reminder. Endeavor to be on time and attend our meetings having prepared ahead of time by studying posted board documents. So I wanted to just thank people who've been working hard to get documents uploaded earlier. It's really helpful to be able to spend time on Friday and Saturday going over those documents. And I think it does help us feel more prepared that we can ask the right kinds of questions and give our questions in advance. Guard public trust by spending district school funds to benefit all children. Understand the distinctions between board and staff roles. And refrain from performing management functions that are the responsibility of the superintendent, business administrator, and staff. Understand that authority rests with the board as a whole and not with individuals. And then participate in professional development and commit the time and effort necessary to be an informed and effective leader. The USBA handbook really emphasized coming prepared to meetings, really reviewing documents, making sure you read through policies. You know, there are seven of us, so if something happens and you're not able to do that, like there are people here that are going to ask questions and engage. But really is our responsibility, the governance responsibility, policies, big piece of that. And really coming here able to contribute thoughtfully and understand things, I think is, is a main part of our responsibility. So that's, that's what I want to say. In terms of how I think this relates to the strategic plan, I just wanted to say that I actually think we cannot provide good policy to support the teaching and learning that needs to happen, to support the best use of resources, and to really create safe, emotionally and physically safe and welcoming schools unless we're coming prepared with open minds willing to engage thoughtfully around issues here at the board.
Okay.
Any questions, comments?
Thank you, Lisa. And welcome, Monika.
Thank you.
Good to have you here today too. Okay, we will move on to item number five, our health assurance, assurances presentation. And we'll turn it over to Doug Finch and Brian Mengham.
It's good to be with the Board of Education. I won't take much of the time because I delegated and appreciate Brian Mengham following up on this assignment. Along with being a science specialist, K-12, he stepped forward and asked how he could help more. And I, and I said, you know, there's a lot of things that come up from time to time in the health education piece. And you've had a previous presentation with him around the committee's work and so forth. I appreciate that participation. Biannually, there's another, every other year, there's another assignment that comes up as far as reviewing some county data. And so that was provided for you in the docs. And so I'll let Brian kind of just take the lead on introducing the presentation and handling, and I'll stay with him here to handle any questions you've got.
Okay, great. Thank you for your time. Just wanted to make sure that we're following all the state rules regarding sex education here in Provo School District. And one of those is Rule 277-474, subsection 53G-10-402, which states that the LAIA needs to every two years review data in a variety of different areas with the purpose that would inform our, let me get the right words right, inform our sex education curriculum. So our state representative, Jody Parker, has put together a folder that has a lot of data throughout the state. And I've linked that to the document that you have so you can see the full range of the data. But there's a lot of graphs and charts and things that maybe aren't as reliable, relatable to our community. So I went through and kind of pulled out the things that I thought fit our community and were most pressing for our community and put them into this document. It's called the Health Instruction Data Review Spring 2025. That's in your board docs. And the hope is you can take a minute to review that data if you haven't already. And Doug and I will be here to answer any questions that you might have about that data, but to inform our, our sex education curriculum. That's kind of the purpose of reviewing it.
So I had a question about the Child Protective Services stuff. With our attendance policy, have you noticed a decrease in reports?
That's a great question. You know, the data that I looked at is just the same that, that you guys probably looked at as well. And I don't, I don't think there's any kind of indicators on, because that's child protective services data that you have, it, it doesn't give us a lot of, as far as years of when these things have happened. It's just the fiscal year of '24 is kind of where they pulled the data.
I'm wondering if that's something that we should be looking at though? So is it something to give to the state legislature to, to show them the tendencies affecting reporting? I don't know.
Yeah, that, that is probably something, previously working in student services, that's a good point, Melanie, that one of the concerns we had without kids coming to school, school is a location where we can be kind of aware of someone not doing well. And it led to some reporting. And so there was, there was a time when that reporting wasn't happening as frequently. And, and so the idea that we're back in school full time again to note that whether our students doing well or not, you know, is, is something that's probably back to whether that data says that we're at pre-COVID numbers or if there's been a change in that. I was wondering if you were also alluding to the idea that educational neglect is also something that is a reportable offense. It doesn't have as much support in current statute in the state. So I think that's maybe a place where you could say, is a place in terms of any sort of amendment to the attendance policy guidelines that are in the state. There's a lot of conflicted things there about what schools should and shouldn't do. And that route of contacting and working with our DCFS representatives around habitual attendance or educational neglect has been a direction that's been kind of steered away from in terms of reporting. They, they are asking again, school districts and so forth, to do most of that response work. And state agencies have seen that as not a priority for them to, either the county attorney's office or at the DCFS level to respond to the educational neglect or non-attendance issues. So there's, I guess, two issues there. One is that, yeah, when we do see kids and we've become aware that they're not well, it's an opportunity for us to, as mandatory boards, to make that contact. But the idea of attendance being something we're reporting, that's not as, within the last three, three to five years, not something that's been an avenue that's been kept open for schools to report just for educational neglect.
Jared just indicated to me that Jason Harrison has reported the number of referrals is already higher this year for child services.
Gina?
I noticed, and maybe you said this when I was opening the files, that the county data is from 2021?
That's what I was asking about.
Yeah, that's the most, that's the latest data that they've taken is in 2021. And before that, it was 2012. So they don't, they don't gather this data.
It's kind of, it's connected to the census oftentimes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
And is the child protective services data for the entire state of Utah?
That is, that is the entire, entire state. It's not broken down by dis, by county like the other data is.
Okay. Thank you. She said we're supposed to look at this every two years and it helps inform what we're teaching. So what, looking at this now, is there anything we feel we want to adjust, need to adjust as we teach our students?
I hope that's a question you're posing to the Board of Education for sure, right? It's tough for us to be in a spot to, to make that, that call from the teaching and learning perspective. We have asked the teachers if they feel like they've got adequate resources to teach. I think this is intended to be kind of that 10,000-foot level of saying as a board who has this governing responsibility and your constituents who want to make sure that we're making good educational choices, if we've felt we were directed by the board and by the superintendent to do an evaluation, health and education curriculum is not one of those things that's regularly on the docket for us to review. It's kind of by conversations like this that would prompt to say, should we be looking at things beyond what are the resources that the state office of education provides for us? You could imagine because of the content, particularly things related to anything around human sexuality and that sort of thing, that the state is very involved in, in helping screen that the curriculum products and programs that are approved in Utah schools by law. So, so we haven't really gone out and done a lot of seeking additional resources because of some of the sensitivity in the approval process that would have to go through that. So we do rely solely at this point mainly on, on things that the state has provided. There was reference to one.
The last document has, has a link to what we do use for our human sexuality curriculum in, in the district. So on it, just on the last page of the document, there's a link. They'll take it back to the district's website that has kind of some explanation, because we have an adopted curriculum, but we, there's parts of it we do use and there's parts that we don't use.
Yeah, you see, it even suggests that there's certain things not to, to use within that curriculum based on what state statute tells us to do. So, so, as I said, it definitely is from the, like, the high level that this intention is if there's something within the data that you're concerned about, that needs to be a follow-up study or a committee to be put together to, to research why we might say there's a Provo need specifically, then we would look for that direction to come from the board and superintendent to begin to study that.
We have to make any changes, sorry, or anything when the data's old.
Well, and that's what I was going to speak to when I first started on the board and was on, had been part of the Sex Education Curriculum Committee, right? Which largely part we are, there we are screening if there's teachers want to use anything additional, right? That make sure it falls within all of the requirements from the state. We went over when Lindsay was here, I guess, yeah. This was the data she went through in one of those meetings and talked about how what we're currently doing, how this data was a result of some changes that were made into some of the decreases and some of the numbers and different STI's. So it seems to me that with this, the age of this, the data we have, we are doing what we can within that. Like that, that is, that has been informed by what we're currently doing in our education. Does that make sense?
I think, I think it's a, it's a minefield, right? As a therapist of adolescents who are sexually offended, I think we should be teaching consent in this district. We cannot, it is against state law, right? It's against the law to do that. And so I think we kind of are like, I've looked over the, I've looked over, actually it's been a couple of years, but I've looked over the stuff. I think based on state law, that's, I mean, really, we really can't.
I think in the, I think in 10th grade, I just think you don't, they don't teach in 8th grade.
Do they teach it in 10th grade?
No.
Not at all.
I'm pretty sure it was.
I just think that, that was brought to the state legislature. It was state.
Yeah.
Right. Any other questions?
We did have some discussions.
Okay.
Occasionally you can find some additional data. I know it's, it's not necessarily related to what's been provided here, but this is again, a conversation on another day for something like the SHARP survey. It also provides for you some information, and that can be broken down by district and by community as well. It could also be some of these social, emotional, and other types of behaviors, high-risk behaviors and so forth, that, that I think is another day for another decision each year as to whether we choose to participate in the SHARP survey. But when you talk about something more timely, besides the census data that the state puts together for us, that would be an argument to say it's nice to have something that's an update to this with our local constituencies, to how they are feeling, these, these matters are being supported and addressed, the resources they have. I know there's individuals that are on both sides of the fence as to whether that SHARP survey is, is something that you want to offer in schools or not. And that's been an argument back and forth. You know, I know in my time in student services, we talked at length about that. So just, that could be a piece to just kind of tuck away is that that's a place where we can get some of this data that helps us make some good decisions about curriculum and support for kids.
We have to now add gun safety, firearm safety to the health curriculum. So if there's anything you want to add, we're going to be looking at that.
Yeah, I know the secondary, just, I just, the training I went to, there, there's a video for the secondary schools that's accessible, they can use for that. But that is both in the health curriculum, 8th grade and 10th grade, where they talk about firearms.
I would just like to put in a plug for getting information to parents and resources to parents so that they can be having these conversations also, you know, in the way that they want to be having them in the home, including information around topics like gun safety, consent, all of these things, like, well, we may or may not be able to talk about them in our classroom. Can we provide resources? I don't know if that's, or links to information to parents? Okay. All right.
They can certainly have access to anything we'd make accessible to the kids, right?
Okay.
That'd be probably like our best guide, right?
My daughter's getting the 5th grade and she's thrilled. And they sent me off the staff a month in advance so we can go over it. She does not want to go over it with me, but we will. But yeah.
I think, I think our district.
Yes, they sent me to, they sent me an email and it was, it's all very clear. And I, at least in my experience as a parent, it's been very clear and I've been pleased with the communication. I do wish that we would expand it, but I am probably in a minority on that.
All right. Thank you, guys, for being here. Okay, agenda item number six. We're going to get a report on our early learning plan from Michelle Eldridge.
Do you want to project, Michelle? So are you going to project? I can't. All right, I'll just.
Is it just everything she put in?
Yep. I just updated it. Was I revised her?
All right. Okay. So good to see all of you. So just going over kind of where we're at with the UELP at this point of year, I don't know how much background you want a review on, so I did put some slides in that on a little bit of a review. So do you want a little bit of review of what it is before we just jump into data?
A quick one would be great.
Okay, all right. So slide number two has the overall requirement. So this all comes from Senate Bill 127. In the slides that you have, that link will take you to the Senate bill in case you need to reference any of that. But basically it requires that the district have an early learning plan. There's, there are goals that you have to submit. The goals are based off of a three-year trend, and those goals are based off of Acadian's data. And a committee of lots of us work on looking at that data. So that includes district administration as well as school leaders that evaluate that data. The plan has to be approved by the state. It's approved by you all. It's required by law to have math goals. And then now, as of last, not this last legislative session, a year ago's session, reading is optional, even though the Senate bill is a literacy bill. So.
All right.
Okay, all right. The right-hand side, wait, go back up, Wendy, sorry. The other part of this requirement, all under the same bill, are these things. So letters training for teachers was required for the past three years. We're on our last cohort of that. Letters for admin, which is not the same as the teachers had, but they were required to do that. This is where Acadian's reading and math requirement comes in. There, we're required to have diagnostic assessments for literacy and math, interventions for students, parent communication, that's our Acadian's letters and parent guides. I think you've all seen those this year. There's links to the new ones we sent out this year. And then the last component of this is that elementary administrators, principals, and district leadership are required to participate in what's called change management. We'll be doing that next school year as a, as a cohort in our district. So those are all the things that are part of this legislation. Okay? All right. Okay, so today I'm just going to go over, review what our goals are, what supports we've provided this year to the schools, and then what our middle-of-year data looks like, just from a district lens. So as a reminder of our goals, we have two math goals and a literacy goal. I put them in a funky order because that's the order of the plan. So my brain did not like doing literacy in the middle of two math, but that's what it is in our plan. So this first goal is the district's choice goal, the math goal. And this goal is that we will maintain the number of first graders who are, come in at or above benchmark, that we maintain that number by the end of the year. So you're allowed to do a maintenance goal if your trend data shows that you're not, you have not been doing that. So our data was based off, again, that three-year trend. So first graders who start on grade, on or above, end on or above. We don't have a slide. Be awesome if we had an increase, but we're really making sure we've maintained that. So that's goal number one. Our second goal is a literacy goal, and this one is an increase goal. So this is an increase, the percentage of first graders who start the year at or above benchmark, and that we increase that number by the end of the year. So you started on, now we're looking at our yellow and red students, the kids who are not on, and can we get them on? So increasing that by 12% as a district, not 12% at every school. That would be insane, 12% as a district. What would be sane? It'd be rigorous and awesome, but it would be very hard. Very rigorous goal. And then our third goal, and this, this is a state mandated goal. Every district has to do this one. So first through third graders have to show, we have to have at least 60% or more that make typical or better progress on Acadian's math. Probably most of you remember we had that as a state mandated reading goal for the past eight years. That changed this last year when the legislation changed to math. Any questions on the goals? We're clarifying what it means. No? Okay, all right. Okay, so let me talk about the supports of what we've done this year with a lot of collaboration between departments. So we have a district team, administrator team, that meets twice a month from June until always. And this team consists of me, Nate, Judy, and then specialists, Jared, and then specialists in our department as well. So with, with teaching and learning, we have Jerry Reader and Tatum, who are our math and literacy specialists in our department. It's Tiffany who sits on that team over interventions. And we meet twice a month to review data we see, questions that we see, planning, and then we do some planning for professional development or school-based needs. So we meet quite regularly, plan, plan professional development. We did have a PD day in March, and a lot of that PD in March was really targeted toward this plan. And then a lot of specialist support. So both in teaching and learning and my department, in our department, our specialists are heavily involved in the schools with helping them plan this. Most of our training happens in instructional coaches meetings. So that weekly meeting on Wednesdays, that when we meet to plan during the month, that's, that's when we're doing district. I'm going to do the little, I can only do quotes with one hand. No, actually, I can move this hand. To do, that's, we train the instructional coaches who then go to their school. So that's kind of the, the biggest part of our training where that happens. So that connects to principals. So Jared's communicated at PLCs what the plan is, expectations, clarifying questions, those kinds of things. That principal at PLC gets feedback from principals. And then this is a really critical part of our implementation, and that's the instructional coaches or Title I coordinators who we, we train on that Wednesday meeting. They go back to their principals and talk with their principals about what data they looked at for their school, what they learned, and then what does this mean at our school? And then, I should have done this in a little cycle. Then Judy and I, our specialists, kind of divide up the work then. So what, what we try, we've tried to individualize the support because it doesn't look the same. So maybe our Wednesday training, everyone, we do case studies and we look at some data, and then we give them lots of time to look at their own school data and ask questions, make action steps, make a plan. And then we follow up with them on those plans. And they're not, so the planning isn't necessarily directed by us, but facilitated in, oh, did you look at this? Or maybe look at this? And how's that going? So that's, that's the support. And then I'm kind of talking in circles a little bit, but the instructional coaches and Title I coordinators get a lot of PD from us on this. And that PD, especially the last three months or so, has involved a lot of case study work. So we'll show an example of something we see on data and have them as a whole group analyze it with no names or things attached. What do you see? If you were just looking at this, what would you say? And then we kind of brainstorm and make sure they're understanding the data. And then we give them time to look at that on their school level. So we'll walk them through the exact same process, but at a school level. And we try to really narrow it down to just one little piece so it's not overwhelming. And the data we're looking at is in Acadian. So we're looking at Acadian's progress monitoring, or we're looking at middle-of-year data. We, we pick that case study and data analysis based off of the time of the year it is. So like last week, we looked at how, how are your students doing in the group you chose a couple of months ago to look at? So when you get on and look at progress, how are those kiddos doing? How are they performing right now? So that's the support that's being provided as we implement the plan. It's a little bit, I want to say flexible, but that's probably not the right word. I don't know, Judy, what word? It's rollercoastery. It's kind of like, ooh, what do they need? And we think there's a need, and then it's like, oh, there's a whole nother need, so we have to adjust, which is hard a little bit for our specialists because we're altering the PD and the support every two weeks a lot of the times, which is good, but a lot of, we can't make a solid plan that some of us want. This is exactly what it's going to be. It's not how it goes. Lisa?
And let me just remind me, there's an instructional coach or a Title I coordinator in every school? Or those are district coaches pushing into elementary schools?
No. Every school has an instructional coach. So all 13 have an instructional coach. And every Title I school has a Title I coordinator. Also. Also. So at these, yeah. So, yeah. So at our highly impacted schools, at those seven schools, at these trainings, they have two people coming to look at the data and getting the training and taking the training back to their schools.
Back into the classrooms.
Yep. 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 Which has been really good for those schools. And honestly, something that, when you have a partner that are looking at it with you and helping, has been very much a difference between our Title I and non-Title I in those trainings, because there's someone to bounce the ideas off. They sit at tables and help each other for sure, but having someone else in the moment with you has been, yeah. So here's, let me just like, this is just a click-through of examples of that. So this is an example of a case study we did. I'm just going to, I just did screenshots of a whole bunch of examples of these things. So this is an example of a case study that we did with them. So we had them pull up and look at teacher A, teacher B, had them with us, look this up, and then discuss, what do you see? Oh, I did this funky. It's a PDF, isn't it? Okay. In PowerPoint, there's like 15 pictures here. So pretend there is.
Or pretending there is.
Yeah. So evidence of those things, these things behind it are the supports we've given schools and how to differentiate the data that they see, and then action plans that they might want to use when they go back to their school. So I'll, I'll share the slide deck with you so you can see that if you'd like to see it. Jennifer?
So just curious how it then translates at that school level? So is the instructional coach the one that's kind of directing the work for every classroom? Or are they teaching the teachers how to do this?
So good question. Wendy, will you, can you pull that up? Maybe that would help to answer that question.
I'm not on, but I'll.
Oh, sorry. Did I email? I think I did this morning.
She's in our. Yeah. You emailed it.
We emailed something.
Oh, I emailed you guys school plans, not this.
Oh, okay. I'm like, I haven't seen him yet.
So Jennifer, to answer your question, which is the worst answer ever, but it depends. What we've tried to do this year and even last year is really target this smaller than bigger, not assuming everybody needs the same thing. So it really, what it looks like is different. So we, at our, so yes, instructional coaches have the responsibility of going back to their school and talking with their principal. That's the ask that we have. Talk with your principal about what you just learned, what did you see in this training, and what, what do you think should happen next at your school? And then that's up to the principal and the coach and the leadership team to then decide, now what? Does it go to the PLC? Do they have a training? Do they call a specialist to come in and help? And that's what we talk them through, is, once you go back and share this information with your principal, you let us know how we can help you and support you with that. So here's another example. This is another look at data. So these are just screen captures of what we've done with them. So this was letting them know, this was our first data dive, figuring out who the students are that we need to move. So as an example, if you remember, the first grade goal of moving, the literacy goal, that's a moving goal, we wanted them to get the big picture of district-wide, it's 12% that moved from yellow and red to green or blue. But what does that look like at the teacher level? Because that can feel really overwhelming. So we provided the data with them. We actually looked, and then we helped them see, oh, for every teacher, that means moving all my yellows to green, and no one had more than like four or five of those kids in their class, and moving one red to green or blue. And when we put it in numbers like that, it was like, oh, I can move one red to there. And many teachers were like, I already did it. I already have one red kiddo that's moved. So this is an example of kind of just looking at that. You can just click. And this is an example of some PD that was offered. So our specialists in both departments worked together on fluency, ideas to implement in the classroom. So what kinds of things can you practice in your classroom to help with these skills? So this is an example of lesson planning. It says fifth grade, but we did lots more grades. So lesson planning, what to do with a partner. Go ahead, Wendy. Here's another example of PD, a piece of PD. So this is something Jerry did. So first grade fluency, what's one of the things we really, really focused on, both in literacy and math. Action steps, you can just click faster this, Wendy. Here's an example of how we helps them understand the progress monitoring frustrations that we're hearing, and the schools that have a plan for that and understand just the, have maybe not overcomplicated that, sharing that with each other, and how that really can help them, the data points tied to that. So this was just some PD on that. Jennifer, this kind of answers your question of what next. So this is an example of, they looked at this data, and then we provide like think sheets for them to kind of brainstorm, like categorize the students and make notes. And then they can take this back to their principal, so they kind of have an idea of what to talk to about their principal about next steps. So this is just an example of a think sheet, we call them. Here's a real-life think sheet of what they've decided to do. Then what happened after that PD is everyone said, can you make this digital, please? So we can go back and have grade levels do it. So we did this one with them, and then they said, please make it digital. And so we did, and this is an example. This is Spring Creek, who went back and with their whole first grade team replicated exactly what we did with them in the instructional coaches' meeting, and then set goals with teachers. So this is the school work of what happened at several schools after. Many of the schools will replicate exactly what we did in like a PLC kind of format. Not all. There's more, more banking of student work. The last one is an example, and I'll share the slide deck with you. An instructional coach emailed me after PD last week and said, I just want you to know what happens after I go back to the school. And she sent me an email of what she had sent to the teacher and that communication back and forth about watching these couple of kids and the successes there. So just examples of the support that has been happening this year. Not, not perfect, but, but targeted to the goals, which is a little bit different. Targeted to students individually, where we before just kept it more broad, now we're trying to get them to really look at like what, it's four students in your class, well, how can we help you with those four students? Obviously not ignoring all the kids, but really targeting those skills, so. Okay, I can't remember what's next after this slide. Oh, the data. Okay. So here's the data. So goal number one to maintain, this is our maintenance math goal. So we started as a district at 52%. Our middle-of-the-year, we've gone up, so that's really exciting. We've met that goal. This is typical of what we do in the past three years. We usually at middle-of-the-year have maintained that, and then we see a little bit of dip at the end of the year.
Is it typical to go, like, the difference between how many students took it is big? Is that pretty normal?
Yeah. Yep, that's normal too. Yep. So, yep, so you, in order to be counted as making that growth, you have to have been here at BOY, or at MO, BOY. So, yep, yep. So that's our maintenance goal, so we're really excited about that. And then our second goal, which is the really rigorous one, before I show you where we're at, I wanted to kind of show you what it looks like per school. I kind of referred to this at the beginning. So as an example, Amelia Earhart, first grade, remember? They had beginning of the year, 19 blue students, so above benchmark, nine on benchmark. In the whole school, there were three who were below benchmark, and in the whole school, 25 well below benchmark. So the goal for Amelia's team is to move these three to here or here, and technically, they'll have to move more than one here, but this all balances out in the average picture. But that's what we work with the schools individually on, is what does it really look like for your school and for you? So you can see some schools have a lot more to move than other schools would have to move. Some areas where we really were working closely was with this group at Westridge, 14 students here, 10 here. This is an incredibly strong first grade team at Westridge, who was on it before any data was, you know, drilled down. So just giving you some perspective of what it looks like, it sounds scary to say 12%, and it is, but when you look at what we're actually moving, and the reality is, many schools have already met, their red kids have moved already. Sometimes it's just a testing issue, actually, so just wanted you to see that. And this is where we're at right now. So we started the year at 63%, and middle-of-the-year, we're 66%. So have not met that benchmark as of middle-of-the-year that we're aiming for. For perspective, this was last year, just so you can kind of see where we have been and why the rigorous goal was suggested that we work on. This is basically saying our kids were, we're increasing their tier one, right? Like, our kids are meeting grade level standards. Okay. And then the last one is growth goal, our growth goal. So these little fans represent the pathways of progress, or goal, this is the growth measure in Acadia's reading. So this is, if they, these are the, I know there's not numbers here, and I can show you numbers individually for schools if you'd like individually later, but these are the kids who started well below benchmark and where they ended up for their growth. So first grade is at 59, second grade 46, and third grade 52. So the, the goal is for first through third grade overall, which we're at 53.2%. So this means 53% of our students made typical or better growth. So this is our growth goal, right? Which we'd like to see that number, at least 60%, but we especially want to see these categories, when you see red and yellow, and then you see red and yellow, these kiddos were not closing their gap. Okay? So that's why I put the fans here, so you could kind of see, when we see no red and yellow fan here in this category, we're like, yes, we're closing those opportunity gaps. And then on the opposite of on-grade level and above-grade level, this tells me above benchmark, we have some kids who did not grow. So they're above and didn't make growth. So a conversation to have with those kids too. So that's where we are on our middle-of-year data. Any questions?
Like, listening to this, and maybe you could just briefly speak too. I feel like if, like, parents are listening, I think sometimes it can be hard to hear, okay, we're, like you kind of alluded to, we're focusing on these four kids, and it can be easy to be like, oh my gosh, well, what about all the other kids in the class? And so maybe just speak a little bit to, you know, how that kind of, what the impact is on an entire class, or a whole school community.
Yeah.
And maybe, I don't know.
No, that's great. So, I mean, what ideally happens is you look at those four kids, and you're really looking at all your kids, right? You're putting them, you're banking a whole class and seeing where everybody is, and you're really knowing, you know, you're maybe extra-tracking those four kids to really get, but that doesn't, the, what you're doing with those kids is also happening to four other kids, right? And it's also happening to all, you know?
Right.
So all of the kids, really. And that really has happened at, at most schools. I would say all of the schools, actually. I'll correct that, yeah, that it's, this is the targeted group, but that, but everyone has goals in this. Yeah.
Well, I was just thinking, well, you know, we have one growth goal articulated here. I know every school is tracking growth data for every student in literacy in every year. Because I really appreciated the data that shows, like, just because a student is above benchmark, doesn't mean they shouldn't also make a year's worth of growth in a year's worth of school.
Yep. Yep.
I just appreciate you sharing also what your team is doing to support our coaches and therefore the schools. Because kind of looking at the data, I'm kind of like, whoa, we're working on this, why are we not seeing it a lot? And maybe we will by the end of the year. Then I also remember, this is our first year, right? With every school having an instructional coach?
Yes. With every school having an instructional coach, that is totally accurate.
And so maybe this is the first year of really building the system, and as we build the capacity with our coaches and our schools, hopefully it will compound from year to year, and we can get that momentum even faster.
For sure. And success, we know breeds success, right? So teams and places where they've been very successful in literacy and progress monitoring and reading, and aligning their instruction with the data that they're getting back, both in tier one and tier two, where that's been really successful in literacy, with math, they're seeing the same kinds of things. But a lot of it is teacher understanding, right? And, and just the more understanding and the more training. And we're seeing a lot of really great things come back. In fact, the Title I coordinator texted me just yesterday and said, listen, listen to this video. And she had, she was in her office videotaping, and there's no kids on it. She's just like, listen quietly. And there's a kindergarten class outside in her hallway, and the teacher is waiting to go to lunch, and she's saying, what comes before? And she's saying, 18, and they're all going, 17. But she's standing in the hallway, practicing math fluency, which is a strategy that we taught them at the PD day, and a strategy that we've taught them in instructional coaching. So it was super cool to get evidence of that, but not something that was habitual for many of our kindergarten teachers as a, as a, I don't know, natural, just part of what you're doing when you're walking. Yeah. Yeah. So, but coaches have been instrumental in helping that happen.
I think the other piece of this too is, I think Jared and Michelle and everybody have worked, and Judy have worked really hard to make sure that principals are understanding the importance of this plan. And I don't know that that's always been on everybody's radar. I think, I think their school improvement plan has been more important, and this has been kind of like a, well, this is just something we have to do, and that, it's something the state is requiring, and so now it's more of, no, this is something we do as a district, and we need to be monitoring this. So it's a little more buy-in.
Yeah. And I think more clarity about a why, that it's not just to comply, but how we can help them see that this is helpful to student learning and growth regardless of a comply, because Senate Bill 127 says that we have to do it. We had a kindergarten teacher talk about this to the whole kindergarten team at the PD day. She just, her data looks incredible, and the teachers were like, why? And she was like, because I decided to really get into this, and look what they're doing now. And she was able, a highly impacted school, hardest kindergarten class probably across the district, and her kids are off the charts with it. And she really was just like, because I decide, like, I just was like, I'm gonna figure this out. And so the buy-in and the conversation about the why, not because it's compliant, but because it's gonna help my students, has been really powerful, where it's working well.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
We'll move on to item number seven, school improvement. Let's do this, and then we'll take a break for dinner for a minute. School improvement plan, is that Jared?
No, Wendy. I'm gonna, I'm, sorry. He was like, what? So this should have been, this document should have been emailed to you, I believe. You do have access to it. I think it was, it was, so it should be in your email.
And then what you're gonna see here is you're gonna see the school improvement plans to the side. So this is your job to start looking at the schools that you're assigned to. You're gonna start going through their school improvement plan. And you have commenting access. You don't have editing access. But this is really, your goal here is to ask questions. We have really instructed principals that directives to change the plan come from Jared or Daryl, because they're their supervisors. But if there's something that's unclear and you need clarification on, because clearly if you're not understanding it, that means other people are not understanding it either. We want you to be able to insert those questions, and then those are things that our principals are gonna work with their supervisor on to say, okay, here's what we need to do to clarify these particular pieces. Just a big shout-out, Michelle is the one who has created this template that we use that adds in basically the connection to the strategic plan, it adds in the timeline, and then you'll notice that there are action steps that are tied to it, and sometimes there will be a funding source that's tied to it. Not necessarily is all of that piece filled in yet, because we're still waiting for all of the final numbers on every single budget and everything that they have access to. So, so that is still, they're still kind of working through all of those pieces. So you have that for each school, then you also have their report card that is linked to the state site there, so if you want to see that. But there's no direct link. You actually have to filter down to Provo District and then to the specific school if you want to see that. And then she has also linked at the top the summary of our end-of-year data from FY24. And then they also did a student group accountability sheet, where they kind of went through and could kind of see their different student groups and what's happening with those that are in what I want to call comprehensive school, is it still called comprehensive school improvement? ATS I status, what student groups they're focused on. So you have access to all of that information, and then a key for what that, for what those mean on this front page here. We would like to have the, and then it also has school rankings, so you can see what their school accountability shows. And then you, if you keep scrolling down, you have secondary there as well. So we just gave you access to all of them. Obviously prioritize the schools that you're assigned to, but you're welcome to look at any of them and ask questions about any of them. There's no, there's no issue there. What else do you want to add, Michelle? Jared? Daryl?
Okay. So for trust lands, we are required to approve them in our main meeting. So we do need to look, so is there anything that will specifically point out to us what's part of the trust land plan? Just the funding source, or is there anything else on there?
That's really the only difference. So their school improvement plan is their trust land plan, because we want them to have a single plan. We don't want them to have multiple things, and the only piece is what we're using trust lands money to pay for, and they'll indicate that in the plan itself. So this plan will be copied and pasted into the trust lands website, so that will be uploaded. So this is what you, in essence, are approving.
And TSSA too?
And TSSA as well, yes.
It's to the right.
It's to the right.
Yeah. Oh, not that far.
Not that far.
Right there. So the funding source, yes, will tell you. Oh, that's the TSSA. That's, that's.
Yeah. Like the land TSSA. Yeah. Title I, you'll notice they have early at risk, Title III ML, land trust. TSSA right here.
I'm just looking at the ranking. How many total schools are they out of?
300.
Filtered by our district.
3 for elementary. It's like 315 for elementary, I believe.
But it's all schools.
No, the ranking is done. Well, I don't really, I know she's not, yeah.
She's looking. While she's looking, are there any other questions?
We need to have these comments by, what did we decide? April 25th, I believe. So if you'll prioritize your schools and then provide those comments by April 25th, then Jared and Daryl will be working with those school principals to make adjustments, then the schools will have a chance to go back in and revise anything that they need to, and then you'll be able to still see those revisions, and then we'll take it to the main board meeting for a final approval.
So the ranking is done first with all schools in the state, right? So 969. And then they ranked Title I schools. So there's two rankings that happen. First, everybody, and then Title I, and then the accountability system uses the Title I ranking to determine cuts. That's why there's two. And I had it filtered by just our district now, it has everybody's. Refilter it if you, okay. Or do you want me to leave it like that?
No, let's re-filter.
Re-filter it. It was, it just makes more sense to be knowing like, what, like, total number.
But they don't want it, they don't care about everybody else, they just care about us.
Okay, any questions on that?
For the comments and questions, how do we, do we email it to somebody?
No, you're gonna just actually put a comment on it. So you'll highlight the thing and put a comment. So like, as I was looking through one, I was like, this is confusing language. I don't know if this is moving, if we're trying proficiency or actual number of students. I don't care, I just need it to be clarified, right? So just, so you can just ask those questions, and that will just help them in that process, so. And they've really tried to, I mean, we've taken them through significant, they've done needs assessments on all of this. They've broken everything down by student groups. Um, and really tried to evaluate what trend lines. They've looked at trend line data to try to see, oh, man, my MLs are going down. That means I've really gotta focus on this. So even though I'm not in, you know, um, I'm not, I'm not as worried or haven't been as worried about them, I need to be worried about them, because my trend line is moving down. So they've looked at all of that data very thoroughly.
Okay.
And just to, just to clarify, these goals are all, I see, aligned with our strategic plan, right? So that when we can present that data at the end of the year to the community, it'll also...
Yeah, so you'll notice it says, um, the school goal, your priority one is academic achievement, right? And so then they have their goals that are tied to that. And then they have their math goal, and then they'll have wellness and safety, which is priority two.
That's great.
So we made sure that they had all of that in there. And that's aligned with PDIS and the SET and all of those pieces.
Yep. Okay. Okay. Uh, we will now take a five-minute break to grab dinner and please, the rest of you, until we resume at four fifty-five with our next agenda item. And Devin, can we pause the recording?
Yes, we can pause the recording.
All right.
Okay, you need to know that YouTube is still live. You'll just be aware of that.
Yeah, we wanna know. Hutch is opening his mission call tonight.
You are, oh my gosh. Davy just opened his two weeks ago, it's so fun.
I was having like a breakdown, because it came like yesterday afternoon.
Oh, you haven't, you haven't looked at it?
No, I haven't.
So Davy's came the Monday of spring break, and he and his dad were driving down to San Diego. So they were the only two. And he was like, Mom, I'm like, okay, if you can send out, I was thinking, all your siblings, we can get them on the phone. So like, literally, his feelings were in all of this, all of it. So they all stepped out of class, we got on Zoom, so we opened it in the car, and then we were sworn to secrecy. It's a week later when he got back, but we had like all his friends and community over, so.
I got like the text from like an unknown number.
Yeah.
And I was like, Mom, 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 Dad!
So when it used to come in an actual mail in an envelope, the mailman knew what the, like, mailman knew you weren't waiting for. And so when my oldest son died, his call, it was at the post office. Do you wanna come meet me? Yes, like, I don't want you to drive the whole route and draw, but he handed it to me. And I almost steamed it open, but I scoped.
Go get one, Hutch.
I thought a lot about it, and I watched some YouTube videos, and I was like, no, he'll know if I steam it open. Yeah, and they came in the mail.
Is Hutch have a phone?
I think so. From the looks of the sighting.
It comes to the email too.
No, I was just wondering if he had an actual phone. I think he uses the house, the home phone. Well, if you have one, it's... So when he comes to, when he came to, in January, when he came to the thing, he just brought, it's the house phone that the house brought with him.
Okay.
But, he had one now.
So Hutch, are you excited about opening your call? Have you already opened it, and this is just the general?
No.
Okay. Because that's what's happening more and more with our kids. They'll open it with their family, and so they'll do a big, a big opening. And then they have to act surprised.
Like, because most, most of my family is like in town right now.
Oh, wow.
Before like they all spread out, so we're like, oh, gotta get them all there.
So you have no idea where you're going yet?
Yeah. Hope my sisters are...
Oh, they are both out right now.
My older sister, Rachel, is in Hawthorne, New York. And then my older sister, she just barely, I think, last week or the week before, that shipped out to Canada, Calgary.
Cool. Okay. Has she been cold before?
She said, she said it's a different kind of cold up there.
Are we on it? I know my mom and grandma were, they're not very comfortable.
Oh, I will take later lunch.
Does she have a phone yet?
Because I usually bust around with my two younger brothers from like their sports and school. And so this is just for my parents, like, let me know times and stuff.
When did you start doing it in their gym? Sorry, I hate it.
I agree.
I love food. And they say the students want it. Students wanted a Timmy, you wanted a Bellmark. Okay, not. Bellmark and oysters.
All right, are you ready, everybody? Okay, welcome back, it's four fifty-five. And we are moving on with our study session agenda, item number eight. Uh, we are now gonna talk about our boundary visibility discussion. And Devin, would you like to start us off?
Yes. We have Lance here from MGT. He'll be our final, our final report with the executive summary and some suggestions on boundary changes. He's done a great job getting it all together. Yep, it is your turn.
Welcome, Lance.
Hi, how are you all?
Hi, back.
Yes. You guys asked if I would come, I said yes, so here I am.
There you are.
So, now these are the kinds of things that, you know, I like virtual, I'm fine with that when in the applications where it's needed. But these are conversations that need to be had. These are important conversations that need to be had in person, in case you've got more direct questions, so. That's not my slide.
Last time you were here, it was your mom or your dad's birthday or something, right? What were you headed to do?
It was my dad's birthday, yeah.
Yeah. Oh, it's his birthday.
Um, he's eighty-three, he's very, very happy to be eighty-three, because he never thought he'd live to be past thirty, so.
Oh, well, there you go.
Yeah, he, uh...
Wow.
But thank you for asking, I will, I will let him know. Now, if you go back for my wife's birthday. Yeah, it's a great picture, isn't it? So, um, I do have some slides that are repetitive because of, just because of the nature of the information. If this is then sent out or somebody's reviewing, and I just felt like it presented a more cohesive story. So I'll go through the slides very quickly, fairly quickly, and then we can circle back to any questions, and I'll make any notes, Ernie. I'll highlight certain things that we make our way through, if that's okay. So we just have some general community information. These are things that we did share as part of the community engagement. And I always find them to be very interesting in terms of just looking at your community, some of the things that you can see, median family, household, incomes, total households, total population. Now, this is a different, um, source, I, I think it's iPads. So it's got a different, some different numbers that you might see. Pretty close to what your own numbers have. These are always interesting to me in terms of when the houses were built. A large portion of your housing, over half, was built in that seventy to nineteen ninety-nine. And this is a strong number right here in terms of your household, um, broadband, internet. A little bit different for you community, I think this apartment number is probably a little high, because that's total housing stock in this area. And the university impacts part of that as well. Okay? And then this number is specific to parents of, of students in your, in your district. And again, the household income goes up a little bit. I think it's very interesting to me to note that you have a very well-educated community. Those are very high numbers in terms of advanced or higher education numbers. But again, um, very strong numbers, indicative, indicative of a very strong parent population in terms of your school community. And again, this is a similar slide, um, just the, your building inventory and grade levels associated with the given building. So this is a slide we had seen before. And again, I want everybody to think spatially in terms of verification of data. So this is, this was a big part of it, there's a lot of back and forth. And you have a very strong team led by Devin in terms of being able to provide that information and have conversations surrounding your schools, especially in areas of capacity and utilization. So we chart every student, this is not your community. But we chart and give a dot for, a position for every student within your district. And then we break those out into study areas of approximately fifty students, depending on how the zone works, in terms of being able to maneuver and shift students. This is an important slide. This one, to me, is, is some of the most revealing information for your community. And we talked a little bit about this one now. We have refreshed some numbers in terms of per accuracy going forward. But as you look at these numbers, these are the count of the students living in the attendance area. These are the attendance areas, for whatever reason you brought forth, that you're living with today, your current attendance areas. And as you go across, what you're seeing is, this is the number of those resident students that actually go to that school. So you have five hundred and one students zoned within the Amelia Earhart Elementary Attendance Zone, and three hundred and forty-three of those actually attend Amelia Earhart. And then as you go across, you can see the choices that have been made in terms of attending other places. Now, the, one key point of this, that I think that you need to, and I didn't share this last time, is, is we worked our way through, these diagonal numbers, those are reflective of the boundary choices of your district, okay? All these other numbers in the white, the pink is the boundary choice, the white is a policy choice. Okay? Whether or not you're allowing students to be a part of your DLI programs, school choice, all those options that you created for your parents are reflective of the policies and, or at least the standard practices of your school district. So again, pink is boundary, white is policy, in terms of attendance. And we're, and I have more specific numbers for you in regards to DLI and some other things as well. So, um, again, your elementary attendance, enrollment maps, and all the students that are charted in terms of where they live, and you, you can see your out-of-district students as well in terms of that. And we're gonna get into each of the enrollment maps, and these are ones that you have seen prior. So as we scroll forward, you can see Canyon Crest and the, the zone and where the students live. Edgemont, their, their attended zone and where the students live. As we scroll through Rock Canyon, similarly, Wasatch, Provo Peaks, and where they live, and Provost Elementary. Tempanogus and West Ridge. Lakeview and Amelia Earhart. And then Franklin and Sunset. And what we got there? Spring Creek. One other, one other thing about, and we'll talk about this in just a moment as well, but you're noticing your attendance zones, you do have some island zones. You actually have a little bitty one here for Franklin as it comes down. So there's just some different, some different attendance zones there as we're examining this. Similarly, enrollment in school residence for your middle and high schools. So again, at Centennial, a thousand thirty-two, nine hundred, more of the resident students attend at Centennial, carrying across, similarly for Shoreline. And then Provo High and Tempe Use Numbers going across there. Okay? And these are your middle school enrollment maps, the total middle school population, and the heat maps in terms of student density. And then you can see where, where students reside and where they go to school. So not as much movement there as, percentage-wise, at least in your middle schools. And I think you find a similar number, similar thing when you scroll on down to your high schools. You know, the vast majority of the high school students go within their, their residence zone. So this is, uh, this kind of stemmed out of our last conversation, your DLI enrollment and school of res, student residence. So there's a lot, there's a lot going on here, though. We'll be a quiz afterwards, and it's not open notes, so be ready. All right. So let's, let's play this across, and I know I keep, I, I go with Amelia. Let's go on to West Ridge. So Wes, Wefwit, golly, West Ridge, thank you, it's easy for me to say. Current enrollment, six hundred and eight, maximum capacity, six sixty. Target capacity then, for us, would be six twenty-seven. So you're at about a ninety-six point nine seven utilization. Now, there's some questions about, there are seven hundred and seventeen resident students. If all of the resident students attended West Ridge, you would be at a hundred and fourteen percent.
Remember, this is without the portables.
This is with, this is without the portables, and it does not factor out as, out of district students. This is just the resident students. So when we're building attendance zones, and we're building these attendance zones, we're, but, we're, we can only really build those out of resident numbers. When you're balancing that utilization, we can only build, those building blocks come out of resident utilization, out of those study areas. So similarly, let's go to Provost. Five hundred and ten in the current enrollment, maximum cap, capacity is six oh five, target capacity of five seventy-five. Could we wanna be in that eighty-five-ish in the green, the eighty-five percentage? There's five hundred and sixteen resident students. If just the resident students attended, you'd be at eighty-nine point seven eight. So as you carry this across, as, as we go ahead, we'll just go ahead and carry this across then, for like Wasatch, there's four to six resident students. If they just attended, their resident utilization would be sixty-two percent. There's seventy-three, um, students that have opted out of the attendance zone. And then, then you got a number of students that are opting in. But out, the opt-out percentage, the number of students that reside within the zone but attend elsewhere is just below eighteen percent. So, and so you get very granular there, but as you go across, similarly, it's one of your DLI programs. So you have a DLI count of three hundred and nine, and that makes up fifty-six, six percent of the student population at that, that facility. Similarly, for cast counts and special, uh, special programming there. So as you, as you, as you make your way across this sheet, uh, this form, you can see Canyon Crest, three hundred and two, there's six, that sixty-two percent of the students at Canyon Crest are part of your DLI program. Yes, ma'am?
I'm curious, um, do we know, like, of that percentage, how many are coming from outside of the boundary?
I have a map for that. But wait, there's more! All right, let's go ahead and, and, uh, jump up to that. So again, um, looking at your DLI count, this is just, I took that second half of that other chart, brought it down and blew it out a little bit, so you could see it in more resident numbers. But as you look at this again, your DLI count and the percentage of the student population for that given facility, okay? So, as you, as you were speaking of, so here's Wasatch, and you can see where the students, um, the Chinese program, so where the students reside in terms of their, their, their participation in that program. Similarly for Tempanogus, where they reside and how spread out they are. So a significant portion, as we scroll on into the next slide, a significant portion of them are within their resident attendance zone. But there is a significant number, you know, outside, especially, oh, this is the pretty far and wide in terms of the French program there, Portuguese there, and then Canyon Crest. Probably, probably a high, you know, because it, as it bleeds over into here, um, you can see a little more there with the Spanish program. So, when we talk about student projections, this is a slide that many of you have seen before. There's three key components when we're baking this cake. We're looking at birth factors and how many kids show up in kindergarten. We're looking at mobility factors, and that's the number of kids in and out in a given year. So if you're a classroom teacher and you end up with a smaller class, many times if a kid moves into your school, you gather that class, that's mobility. You had twenty-five, now you got twenty-six, now you got twenty-seven. Uh, so that's kind of the mobility in. Similarly, if you have kids that move out, and you go from twenty-five to twenty-four to twenty-three, similar in terms of mobility. So we look at that, or do you, do, how many of them stay with you as they matriculate through? And then student yield factors, I've got some specific information around development and parcels, and how many kids you generate, how many students are generated out of those, out of those spaces. And all of that comes, funnels down into that student forecast. So we, we got together with your city planner and had some great conversations surrounding your projects and the developments that are going on. This is actually one of your city maps, this is basically everything. If somebody's putting an electrical panel in the garage, it's on this chart. If they're adding a, you know, converting a garage space into a, a living room, it's on this chart, okay? So we great, we, we took a look at everything that was being done, and we looked at the differing parcels. You know, this is, uh, I like this existing school, I believe that's Amelia Earhart.
It is.
So, um, in relation to the airport. So we looked at all the different parcels and what was coming online for you very granularly with your city, with your city planner. Okay, we'll go ahead and go for it. So the, the two big one, the, the big one that's really generating, you've got a lot, there's other smaller things that are going on. Uh, but you're about five of eight phases into Broadview Shores, okay? And, and you know its location on that side in relation to Lakeview, uh, Lakeview. And then you also have Osprey Townhomes as one of your bigger townhomes. This is a multifamily, uh, project that's going on at the southern, I guess that'd be the southwest-ish portion of your district. So if you go ahead and scroll forward. So what we found, we went in and we hand counted to look at... So what we found, we went in and we hand counted to look at your recent phases at Broadview and what's going on at Osprey, and this is a very strong number, you're going to get about six kids per 10 houses as these phases come on. And there's, you know, roughly 50-ish homes, 30 to 50 homes depending on the phase, and there's some different types of housing coming on later in that project. But you're not getting very many out of your townhomes, and we got one in 10 out of the townhomes, which is, to be honest, from a national perspective, this is a strong number, and this is a lower number than we might have anticipated in those types of homes. This is a very strong number, though in terms of the new housing, the housing stock. The challenge, though, is kind of in that mobility of the turnover as folks age in place, do they stay in their home, or do they move maybe to a smaller home and allow, you know, other younger families that might come into that space? And that, you know, complicated currently by real estate prices, interest rates, all of those things kind of weigh into that in terms of the decisions around housing stock. So again, a high, high thing. So in looking at our methodology, you remember we talked about, you know, the hurricane forecasting and the different modeling, so all of these things come back down into our weighted average in terms of being able to generate a forecast for you in terms of where we believe your student population is going to go in the coming, we go out 10 years, so if we go ahead and scroll forward. So, we go back 10 and we look forward 10, okay? Now, this is the one, for those of you that were with us the last time, kind of a weather analogy here, if you're planning a party 10 days out, you start paying attention to the weather forecast, you look, if they say it's going to rain, you say, oh, I'll keep that in mind. Again, we're out here 10 years. If at seven days, if they say there's going to be rain, you begin to give that more consideration. At five, if they say there's going to be rain, you try to find out if you can get an outdoor tent or something. At three days, at three years, if they say it's going to rain, you're probably moving the party indoors. Very similarly with our demographics, we feel really good about the three-year into that five, but when you get out past that, you're making assumptions on other assumptions at that point, from a mathematics standpoint. So it is important, much like that weather forecast, that we refresh that data regularly. You know, we're already working off data that was, you know, back to the beginning of this school term. Having said all that, you're kind of holding your own, because, you know, you've got that housing generation, that's strong numbers, but you're also having kids that are matriculating out on the back end of their senior year. And so, as a district, we anticipate as you go into these next three to five years, you're going to kind of hold your own. And that, to be honest with you, that's a great place to be in, because you're not, you know, as I shared last time, you are not, and if there's media here, and for those of you at home watching online, you are not in a position of crisis. You're well ahead of this curve in terms of addressing it, beginning to have conversations around it, so that you can make a reasonable, considered decision going forward for your school community. Because I do visit in communities where it's a moment of crisis, and so the information that I have to share is not always pretty, and not always well-received. But in this case, you're in a great position to kind of make choices about your facilities and your school and your programming going forward. So we took a look at your building, and this was a lot of back and forth between our team and Devon's team in terms of looking at your facilities, breaking down the rooms, and trying to figure out, you know, what types of programs are being offered, how many students can we load into those facilities, and what that utilization rate might be. So we'll go ahead and scroll forward. So in looking at your capacity and utilization, and these are bricks and mortar, bricks and mortar, so as you look at this, you can see that our, a lot of companies do this a different way. Our sweet spot is at 80 to 95, because of what it does is it allows for that bumper group of kindergarteners, or if you bring on additional program or do different things in your high schools, or if you roll up, if you bring up another special ed classroom that has to have lower classroom sizes. All that flexibility that comes with that. Again, in the high schools, you know, having that larger band class with the smaller AP class, all of those things for the ebb and flow of a building, the flow of the cafeteria, the hallways, all of those things that come into play. So looking at your numbers, you've got very strong, these are very strong numbers overall. Your overall district average is 85%, which means that you're making great use of the space that you have, and you're operationally operating efficiently. Your high school average is at that 95, a little higher. Middle school, you have a little more capacity there, especially Shoreline. And as you carry your way down, you know, you do have some schools, Amelia Earhart, Spring Creek, that are a little bit on the underutilized side of the coin in terms of those facilities, but you can bank that against what you have at Sunset, and then later there at West, West, Westridge in terms of that utilization. So again, we have maps, you know, here's your elementary mapping, and here's your utilization in terms of color coding. Similarly, your middle school current attendance zones, and then the color coding is representative in terms of the utilization. And your high schools follow that same, that same attendance zone footprint, and here's your color coding then for utilization there. A little higher on the high school side. So, part of the conversation we had when I was here before is kind of looking at, all right, you've got these zones, you've got these utilizations, what might we do? So we shared as part of our community engagement, you know, the potential attendance zone adjustment considerations in terms of, if you're going to begin to look at your attendance zones and you're going to look at the current utilizations, and you're going to try to balance those utilizations, what do you do? What are the things you consider? What path would you like district leadership to take in beginning to analyze this? And they stem around these kind of, these core five things. Transportation, it's very expensive to run that yellow limousine down the road. It's in that $5 to $8 range per mile, so it's not, it's not a cheap thing to have a bus and run it down the road. Impact, the number of students that are impacted by that in terms of the special programs, and you have those here with DLI, those types of things. Neighborhood schools, I know for Provo, neighborhood schools for Utah in general, but Provo specifically, neighborhood schools are very important. But you've already kind of seen on your earlier maps in terms of you've got the neighborhood schools and the distribution of students across the district. And again, capacity and utilization, you can't put more kids in a facility than the facility can, well, you can, but it's bad policy. You can't put more kids in there than the facility can hold. So going forward, though, on the next slide, this kind of, I call this the octopus, I know it's not a real octopus, but it goes back to guiding principles. So those five things kind of lead into these guiding principles. Neighborhood schools, capacity utilization, transportation, minimizing impact, special populations and programming. Natural barriers, so when you're planning these things, you've got some creeks and streams, you have some major highways, you have some park and green spaces, you have industrial areas, so there are natural and logical barriers that you would use, especially in your study areas, but also in terms of your attended zones. Feeder patterns. You have fairly, I mean clearly, you have middle school and high school and they track straightforward, and you have feeder patterns, your elementaries go a certain way, we don't always see that, okay? But, so looking at those feeder patterns, those kids staying together as they make their way through, all the way through the Provo District, and island zones. This is the one area where you do have some challenges. You have created, and here's what happens, you've got a new development coming on, you've got a school just next door that's got space for it, it doesn't upset anybody if you tell them, well, that's where you're going to go, I want to run you up there, and it's not that far away, but it does create a non-contiguous border. And you have something different with Franklin, is that space was coming on, you had space just above that and could bring those students up. So, island zones are those things that we kind of look at when we're planning to try to make those contiguous. I will tell you, what we did was we looked at your district, we went to avoid the island zones, we went to protect the feeder patterns, we worked off the natural barriers, protecting as best we could special populations, honoring the capacity and utilization, but the neighborhood schools get to be a challenge, because you're kind of loaded to the east a little bit in terms of buildings, in terms of having them very close to one another. And what you don't want to do is have the school here, you live across the street, and you go to the other school, although you can see the school here. So when you're creating these zones, you try to protect the neighborhood schools, and you try to protect the geography and the footprint, but you can already see with Canyon Crest, it kind of comes down like the peninsula of Florida, like, you know, in terms of how it works because of the location of those facilities. So, it's important also, there's a lot of importance here, I can tell you, she keeps nodding her head, I appreciate you, like, yeah! All right. All of these things pull against each other. So, you know, you have to look at, you know, capacity and utilization, you do your best to minimize impact, but if you're working off island zones and you're trying to eliminate those, that impacts here. And you have to work around these, and we did, one of the things that constrained us a little bit is we did protect the feeder pattern, the current feeder pattern. Okay? So, just a quick snapshot of our community engagement, we had really strong participation from your community. 635 participants led, apparent guardians followed by district staff, so a big chunk of your parents and guardians participated. 78% saw school facilities as good or excellent, which is a testament, don't break your arms patting yourselves on the back, but you've done a good job with your facilities here. This is a key one for us, top two important planning objectives, equitable facilities, enhanced educational opportunities, and there was strong support for CTE and STEM. And in terms of, these are things that we leaned into for our demographic analysis, requirements of the guiding principles, neighborhood schools at 57%, strong support for your special programs at 40%, capacity and utilization were also at 40%. And, this is a strong, this is a strong indicator for you all, 75% of these participants agreed and would support redrawing school attendance zones to make better use of facilities. So that is a pretty strong, that's a very strong response in that area.
Yeah, what's typical, you see?
Oh, everybody's all about rezoning as long as you don't rezone their children.
That's what I wondered, you were that high number, if that's informing that.
I would, you know, typically what we would see is closer to that 50 to 60%, this is a strong majority of those that participated. This is a strong participation number at 635. Yes, ma'am?
Keeping in mind that we have school choice and...
Right.
...go to any school in the district.
Right. Again, it kind of goes back to the boundary and policy.
Transportation becomes an issue by the state.
Yeah, yeah.
That also helps our number drop in there.
All right. So, so, all right, buh buh buh. So here are the current elementary boundary maps, you can see you've got this island zone, you've got some island zones here, it's actually a little bit there, I believe, that's a neighborhood. As you carry these over, and we're going to drill into these, you're not expected just to carry off of this page, you can see some street levels, you can see what we've done is, the map has shifted. Okay? No more island zones, contiguous zones for Franklin, contiguous zones for Edgemont. Again, we've labeled the school, there are some challenges because of school location here, and if you, as you recall, there's a density of population right in through here. And so, one of your lower utilized from a resident student standpoint is Canyon Crest. And so, dang nab it, two hours in there. I shouldn't have pointed out that shit up. All right. So, when you're doing this, it almost works like a, it works like a domino, and it almost always works counterclockwise or counterclockwise, because if you're trying to balance that utilization, and if you recall, your overall student, right here, let me go to the next slide, if you don't mind. Yeah, here we go. So your, your overall student balance, okay, your current, 82.5. So when we're trying to, we can only do, I mean, the best we can do is a plus or minus 82.5, you don't have any more kids for that. And so, when we're trying, when we work this out, as you can see, your current utilizations with the pinks and the yellows, and these are your utilizations if just the resident students, just resident students, is at 77. So again, we're working off resident student maps, that's the only way we can build an attendance zone is off of the resident student maps. So you can plan to serve the students that reside within that attendance zone should they all decide to go to their home school. So, and this is your utilization within this, we assume, we can, for planning purposes, we kept for this opt-out, these out-of-district students, we're assuming that the out-of-district students stay within that school for this number. Okay? That's where you get to this 82.5. And so here's our utilization here in terms of if, in the revised areas. And you can see, we do have some pink still, but a broader number, no yellows, more greens, and a broader balance, but we can only do plus or minus 77.1 in terms of that number. Okay? And again, as you carry this over, looking at the students that are out of district that come into your district, far more, no pinks, far more greens and just a few yellows. So it took quite a bit of manipulation and massaging to bring these numbers in line with that. So as we jump forward, okay, so here's Canyon Crest, and so the pink indicates a pickup. Okay? So the pink or the maroon, however you want to see it, and you can kind of, this is the overall, and again, it's a very long, just by the nature of the geography, this is the foot for Canyon Crest. So as you get over here, you can see, it comes down a little bit here, claiming some, just a little bit below 4190 North Street, and then captures this lower area here, Carterville, and using the Greenway here as one of the natural boundaries. And you do, I know you have all this in your board packet, and in that one, you'll be able to drill in a little closer and have cleaner, cleaner line of sight. Okay? So for Edgemont, because again, we're kind of working backwards, Edgemont gave up some of that space. Okay? So here's Edgemont, no capture, Edgemont's giving away the island zone for a contiguous boundary and giving up that little area at the top. And again, and I did, this presentation basically works from Canyon Crest down, it is not alphabetical, it kind of works in the order in which we had, because that was where we, that's kind of where we had to start. Okay? All right. So going on then, Rock Canyon. So, Rock Canyon gives up, we've kind of the dog head here, gives up these spaces for balance. And again, you'll see this shape then reappear in the next slides, so then it makes its way down to Wasatch. Okay? Again, a contiguous zone in terms of, but raising up that resident utilization for Wasatch. So this Cougar Boulevard, the other thing about these maps is there's less density of student population, so this boundary is here, but that's BYU. There are zero dots in that spot. Okay? So some of these maps, you're going to see, we use a natural barrier here of the Greenway, but in some of these areas, there just aren't any kids. Okay? Similarly here for Tempanogus, Tempanogus gathers some on the north, but gives up some to the south. Okay? So here's the overall, here's the gather, the River Grove up to, here's Freedom Academy there, River Grove, there's another chapel there, I'm not, 1300, I'm trying to see what that street is in my brain. So anyway, you can just kind of see what it picks up. Again, going up in order to balance those utilizations, but it does shed this area down to Center Street over here, 114 and the interstate over here. Similarly for Westridge, Westridge does not take in anymore, but does shed here in the River Grove down and around through the Lake Bottom Canal area. So Provo Peaks and having to give up this space, okay, then gathers a little bit to the south. Again, this just makes a contiguous boundary, there might be a couple kids here, there's nobody, you know, in the hostel itself. Again, another open space here, but gathers some students down here along South Street. And for Provo Peaks, you can see quite a difference here in terms of the shift in student Okay? And then these are, these are the areas where Provo Peaks gathers. So, having said all that, we did this based in getting that plus or minus 77. So there is a more, if you elect to go down this path, is we did, you know, try to pick larger streets, we tried to pick backyards and that kind of thing, but there is, as you see these maps, you're thinking, well, why couldn't you ship? Yeah, you could ship just a little bit here or there, it's not going to drag it, but we were trying to get within that mathematical spread as best we could. So a little bit here in... So, a little bit here in terms of Provost. And again, you saw that this, this area went to a different school. And then Spring Creek. And this just is a drill-in of this area that Spring Creek gives up along the Amtrak station and down to nine hundred South Street.
And that went to Peaks.
Or Provost.
Oh, Provost, I get it.
And this, this little, this isn't a thing in your original, that was just getting your, the, the lines to actually match up. There's no, and so that our, so that our, there's nothing really there. It just made our attendance zones actually overlap. And then, so here's kind of the drill-in then to Sunset View. As you kind of gathered, this space, this is what they're taking on, this went to Franklin in terms of that island zone. So, Sunset View is picking up those students, um, but shedding some here to the north. You can see the drill-in on that around West Street and that kind of thing. Similarly over here, they're shedding the students on the opposite side of the interstate. Okay? And then Franklin. Franklin probably has some of the biggest changes in terms of just their footprint, because they had one of the larger, I don't, you know, it's not a high density of population here, but from a geographic footprint, it's pretty big. And it had this little dot, um, up here. So, this, this gave Franklin a contiguous zone. Kept, it brought the dot in, because it's capturing these spaces in terms of making it a contiguous zone. So, this is kind of a lesson in that guiding principle, because it gave Franklin more of a neighborhood cohesion in terms of just that overall footprint in terms of guiding principle.
Can we ask questions about the specifics later, or are you just going to?
Yeah, let's get through it, then we'll come back. So, again, here's Lakeview changes. They take on some students here and shed just a few in this section. And I believe Amelia, and again, because we work geographically kind of down across, here's Amelia Earhart. Not a lot of changes in Amelia Earhart, because they already had, from a resident utilization standpoint, a pretty high resident population within that boundary. And so, again, this is just a repeat, so you can kind of refresh. This is what you had, this is what you now have in terms of that, that boundary map in terms of the elementaries. A couple of key things, it, it does provide a little more neighborhood cohesion significantly for some of the areas. Um, it does protect that middle school and high school feeder pattern, which was a limiting factor. Uh, given this, you know, the stack of schools over here, that became a very, there was a lot of massaging in order to get those numbers balanced. Alright. Oh, and I just replayed the numbers here, given what we'd seen. I think the next slide is the, thank you, and it, yeah, so we, we'll just stay on that last, that slide prior there. So, alright, what you got? Yes, ma'am?
So, I noticed in Franklin, there's a little, that little, you, you mentioned it, it's like a little, I don't know what to call it. But, um, I'm curious as to why, because it is really quite close to Franklin. And I think it's part of the Boulders, I wonder if it's, is that?
Is this right here?
Uh, no.
I've got a Spring Creek, I can see it better on Spring Creek.
Spring, yeah, you can actually see it better on Spring Creek. So, it's staying at Spring Creek, so I say Franklin, but see the upper left? It reaches, yep, yes, right there. What, I don't understand why that goes to Spring Creek.
It was, that's in your attend, that's in your original attendance zone. I don't know how many students.
Yeah, why wasn't it, I'm just curious, why wasn't it?
Terry, is that where split the Boulders?
Yeah, because the Boulders are split into three schools.
It's not, so that's our choice. We are trying to split the Boulders into three. Corrected?
Well, for now.
Maybe we don't do that anymore.
Okay.
Does that probably bear out the numbers, but if I keep it part of that original boundary when you're doing your numbers?
Yeah.
As opposed to exactly there.
This was a mathematic exercise to get to plus or minus. Should you go down the path of saying, alright, we really want to pursue these, and this is something, we would want, number one, work off more current data in terms of where your students are. And then, then district officials would kind of look, because then you get into some transportation, like that Boulders area. So, there, there are some transportation concerns and loading factors and a density of population there in terms of, alright, if we move this many kids, what does that do to, from a percentage standpoint? You have space, so it's not, you know, so if you decided that they were going to move, you could do that. We work with some places where they simply don't have space.
It's just utility-wise, you can do it.
The, that was a prior decision that we did not replace. This was a lot of fun, by the way. It's fun when you actually have space in which to move kids. Uh, it's really ugly when you do this and there's no space and
Then you're
Yeah.
Other question?
Okay, so, I know that this is just, you're trying to do optimal utilization. For me, looking at like Rock Canyon, we're already declining in a moment, and we have been for many years, and we're now making our boundaries even smaller. So, I'm concerned that numbers will continue to go lower in that area.
That was similar to my question, I noticed with Rock Canyon and Spring Creek, they both currently have lower utilization, and both of them in this plan only lose boundary, they don't gain anything.
Yeah.
And I know it's so tricky, because you were looking at like who lives in the boundary, but clearly, right now, people are choosing out. And so, how do we factor that into?
With Rock Canyon and one of that special, specialty, they've got three, they've got Wasage, three DLIs that are almost within walking distance for those students. So, it makes it difficult, we have a lot of kids going out of that district. So, we're trying to, like, what I've heard from faculty and at the listening tour was, how do we get more students into our schools, bigger boundaries for the, and that's not what I'm seeing.
No, if you go down to, go back down to the number chart there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it kind of comes back, let's look at Rock Creek. Rock Canyon, I'm sorry, Rock Creek's a school next to me in Indiana. So, as you're coming across, yeah, so, in terms of, because of that squeeze of schools up there, they actually, you know, from a current utilization, they're seventy-eight. You reside, if they resided, they'd still be at seventy-eight. With the opt, with the, currently with their, um, uh, resides with, you know, they're at eighty. They're, they're kind of one of, you're, you're exactly right. In balancing the needs of all the schools in that corridor, you're correct.
Which, it's, it's a concern, because we're keep losing, having to lose teachers, and this is a concern for that school. So, I just worried, because one of the things they would like is to see a bigger boundary, so that it becomes their neighborhood school, but I'm just.
Right, because other people are going to choice to DLI. So, if we leave DLI the way it is, then maybe those without DLI programs have a naturally larger hold.
Except for I do hear more, I have heard an increased amount of people choosing Rock Canyon, because it does not have a DLI school.
But, we're not seeing those same numbers. We're not seeing those numbers. We're down about a hundred students for one more.
So, these are things we can still
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. If you go back up one, they're down. So, if you, you know, as you're kind of looking at that, because of the squeeze and the proximity of schools here, so, that's kind of what you're running into in terms of balancing those schools and their footprint. And it's, I mean, it's, I mean, they can't, and this one's, they're a little more squeezed in that, um, you know, they, they don't have anything here to the way, at the east. And so, you're, and then you've had other schools of, you know, they're up against Canyon Crest, which also, um, has utilization issues in that quadrant.
I'm going to ask a really, they're going to impeach me. Would it make sense to close one of our elementary schools?
Yeah, I was going to bring that same thing up.
Bold impeachment.
We, that was not our chart, number one on our scope. So, for those of you online, that was not part of our conversation. You're not quite at the point where you're, we could do that analysis. You're, from a student, overall student population, you probably could, you would be close, and those numbers would bump up into the higher eighties, perhaps ninety in terms of that. You've got time for a more reasonable, a reasoned approach to that. But you have a density of schools here that you don't have over here. And so, and they are very close to one another in terms of, of just, uh, physical distance. So, but there's a ton of things that go into that kind of conversation, you know? Firstly, you got to look at all your facilities, and, you know, you got to look at their footprint and their capacities, and, you know, what, what as a community, would you do to repurpose that, or would that ground be repurposed for something else? Is it on a commercial corridor where you get more, bang, bang for your buck, that kind of thing? So, there are a lot of decisions that surround that. If this, today, if you're asking, would I recommend that, I would not. But I would ask you to keep that in your back pocket as you go forward, because again, if you, remember, we talked boundaries versus policy. And so, there's a lot of policy that impacts that, that utilization of that particular facility. Similarly for, in a different situation for Amelia Earhart. You know, in terms of the number of students opting out of that footprint in terms of school choice.
Um, my question is, where are the boundary suggestions for the middle school and the high school?
We did not alter those feeder patterns.
The same elementary schools would go to the secondary?
Yes.
Because one of my requests was to see if the middle school boundary should be changed now that Shoreline is down in the Boonies. And should it be north and south?
Question then becomes, do you protect the feeder pattern of your high schools, or do you then crisscross applesauce that?
So, one of, one of the challenges that comes with that is if we, if we switch that pattern for Shoreline, you're going to send some kids into an elementary school, then to Shoreline, and then to Timpew, and some of Shoreline will end up going to Provo.
Yeah.
Because, because Timpew, because Timp, and what will happen, the concern that I have is what will happen is people are just going to choice in, so they stay in the same feeder pattern. That's what people want. They want to go through school with a, with a cohort of students. Even if you assign them, because of the school choice situation that we have, they're going to choose to go with that cohort in most cases. They're not going to want to bounce back and forth. And so, I don't know how much, even when you switch those boundaries up, how much of a, how much that's going to actually fix that situation.
Are there board members that want to study that?
We always advocate for a clean feeder pattern. It's a struggle, once you get away from it, it's almost impossible to get back.
Is your concern one of just utilizing that, that school, because it's big, or is it a matter of proximity to the school? Like, what are you thinking?
Yeah, I mean, the kids who live way down in Spring Creek are closer to Shoreline than they are to Centennial. Like, why, why would they go all the way up to Centennial?
They really are now, these north.
Oh.
You know? And like, kids who go to Westridge are actually closer to Centennial than they are to Shoreline. So.
But when you cross east-west, sometimes that's lower, so, I don't know.
Yeah.
To get from Westridge or to Centennial actually takes quite a bit of time, so. Is there anyone else who would want to, because that would be work to study that, so.
Well, the other, your other choice would be to just to change the feeder pattern of your attendance zone for Spring Creek, and you're going to say, they go this way. I mean, that's the cleaner option in that type of thing.
And then to Provo High?
Yeah, they, they track, you change that feeder.
Right, change it for a school.
But our high school, our Provo High is more, yeah, has less space, so we would need to then, I feel like, move someone like Westridge to the other middle and high school. Right, that's where it starts to get.
And that's where you start, yeah.
People will freak out if you suggested that. I'm just coming from Westridge parent, that would cause some serious
Welcome to talking about boundaries.
Well, and your high schools have a different, there's a little, just, there's some different choices in surround your high schools, some of your religious classes and that kind of thing, in terms of the capacities that you have in those spaces.
My other concern is that south triangle of, of Spring Creek over in the Franklin South neighborhood, it's not safe. If they miss the late bus, how are they getting home? These parents who have two jobs or three jobs, they don't have time to go pick up their kids. They can't walk.
From the middle school, you mean?
Yeah.
From State Street to?
From Spring Creek over to the Franklin South neighborhood.
That little red, the little tail that's still existing.
Northwest, the northwest of the red boundary.
I'll show you. Right here. This little triangle.
Okay.
From them to walk all the way over here, that's not safe.
Right, that's why they take the bus.
I mean, the parents really like going to Spring Creek, but they miss the late bus, and the parents can't pick them up, how are they getting home? It's not safe.
They do everything they can to get them on that bus. Occasionally, the school leadership will communicate with parents and try to track down someone to pick them up. And where are occasions, they'll transport a student, but that's very rare.
And that decision is part of the decision that was made at some point, it sounds like, to take the Boulders and divide them between three schools. What, what are your thoughts on that area?
My, with the Boulders and that, well, that, the Boulders is that tiny little spot.
Right.
Right there.
That's what I'm saying, you can see.
They only get a tiny little area. The rest of the south.
The whole triangle's not Boulders.
No.
Right, 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 I see. So, you're saying the whole triangle.
Yeah, but the whole triangle, like.
Is that something you could study though, with that, that area around the Boulders?
I mean, we should definitely ask those parents, are they fine with going all the way over to Spring Creek? Or would they rather go to a school that's closer to the home?
Well, I think, I think we should look at, at this, I mean, it's something we brought up before. Uh, but there's a lot of nuance, so it's, what do our families and parents feel about it? But it's also, I mean, we've been told it was made, the decision was made for a specific reason to balance out the impact on different schools, so we need to look at, is that still a factor, is that not a factor? Um, if we do move that, then we really would have to look at adjusting a lot of other boundaries, or if Spring Creek's really involved below capacity, right? So, um, so I think this can be something that we can maybe get some questions, and maybe we can have everyone submit some specific questions that you'd want answered as we kind of look at that area. And then, as we get answers to those questions, we can continue as a board to discuss what choices do we want to make? And then, we might have to come back to Lance and say, based on these choices, could we look at boundaries based off of that, right? And that might have to affect dominos the other way.
It does, this is a starting point, just from a mathematics standpoint. So, now you're having conversations around transportation and specific divides and walkability. You know, this, this triangle you're speaking of was already, because of utilization factors, you, if it's school, you know, I know, but I'm speaking out both sides of my mouth because of what happened at Rock Canyon, but that's just the squeeze of underutilization within this region of your dis, this portion of your district. This school not being, you know, you didn't want to take away students in a space, in a, in a school that's already underutilized, if we're trying to get to that plus or minus seventy-seven.
Right, so they take that whole triangle out, then you're
And are you thinking they go to Sunset View? Where are you thinking they go?
Sunset View, Franklin, or Amelia.
Because in my brain, I don't know exactly where the middle school barrier is on that.
Oh, the middle school is actually closer to the triangle than, those kids live closer to Shoreline than anybody else.
The middle school would take, the same middle school would take any of those threes.
Right.
Yeah. Probably three. Yeah, how about this? How about we can start a shared document where we put in our questions that we have about this or anything else related to what we saw today, or as we start thinking about what we saw today and the other kinds of decisions we need to make, how they all relate together, and we can put them up there. And then, um, would that work? And then Wendy and Devin and your teams can start to get answers to those questions. And then, as we get answers, we can talk again at the upcoming board meetings about them.
And just to be clear, if and when we make this decision, this is not for this upcoming school year, this would be for the twenty-six, twenty-seventh school. Maybe it'd be if we could get to it, yeah.
At the earliest.
At the earliest would be the twenty-six, twenty-seven.
If there are changes.
I mean, I think the other thing too is we wanted to get Troy's eyes on it from the transportation perspective as well, because the transportation perspective as well, because if you create more efficiency in your buildings, but then you, you know, increase your transportation costs significantly, you know, it might not be good.
This, this will decrease your, cause you're not servicing those island zones. So, um, but you, it's still a tough mix, cause you're, you're basically, buses have to cover all the streets. You know, you're not, you're not, you're not always eliminating as many miles as you might think, because the students in that area still have to go somewhere. You're not, you're not eliminating a bus route, you're not eliminating, um, transportation for any of the students, unless you're getting to one of those situations where you're establishing a walkable zone around given schools.
All right. Are we good?
Yeah, thank you so much.
I enjoy this, thank you so much, I look forward to it.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lance.
You guys have a wonderful evening.
Thank you for joining us. All right, item number nine, we're gonna now discuss the Timpview High School architectural plan. These are, we are on time, I know you're done, guys. Um, okay, so the construction committee has been meeting, and I will turn it over to Devin to kind of explain what we've seen as a committee and that we want to bring to the board today.
Anna, I put out on, uh, board docs while we were meeting, the architect sent me the updated floor plan and the comparison between the schools, so, um, you're welcome to look at that. But Bonnie, would you bring up the one that is the, that presentation floor plans? I just wanna go over this, and then we'll talk a little bit about our next steps going forward. They, um, while, while Bonnie's bringing that up, they, they did complete their bid for the, um, for the cafeteria. Couple of positives, kind of.
Oh dear.
I mean, it's, it's more positive than negative. So, the original, um, guess, because of the, the sheer breadth of what has to happen in that basement with all the piers, and they've gotta cut pipes and weld them back together, it's, it's just gonna be a, a little bit more significant than, um, which is, seems to always be the case with Timpview. But the original estimate that they gave me when they first had the engineers go was a little over fifteen million, um, for just the cafeteria and the boiler room, which, you know, was a little, a little jarring. They brought it back, they brought it down with the actual hard bids to thirteen point four. So, that's great. It's about a million and a half cheaper than what we were planning. We're still over budget overall when you look at the, the couple of different, um, but again, we were, I was always planning on, there's, there's some fund balance that we can use to help cover that, so we're not going and asking for more money for the school. Also included in that thirteen, um, point four is, uh, the fix to the, um, area over by the concessions, the ADA ramp and the concrete fixes over at the stadium. So, that was-
Did they just build that, or do we have to-
No, there, there just wasn't an ADA access to the, to the concession stand, so they just needed to get that. And we just asked them to wait, because we didn't want any more change orders.
Why, but, can we ask why that didn't happen in the beginning?
Um, there were a lot of things. I'm not sure why it didn't happen in the beginning. I wasn't here at the, I mean, I was at the district, I wasn't there at the plan at the beginning. I think the, the request came after, you know, the, there is a way to do it across the track, but that's not always the, the preferred method. Um, and so, there was just the request to have more of an ADA, ADA access for the sidewalk down to, um, the west side of the, of the school, and to the concessions for the visitor side. So, that was, um, that's part of it, that's part of this cost. So, everything on that east side of the school will be finished before they move over onto the west side and do the other parts of the building. So, you can see, um, this, this here is, uh, this is the ad, right?
Counseling.
Is that counseling?
And the, like, um-
And the presentation room. And so, there's several things, um, and Wendy made a great point when we were, when we were doing a lot of the, the planning, was we don't have a lot of places where people can meet in large groups, and so, this is a spot where we can utilize, um, during the summer and, and at other times, to be able to have a spot where-
More than just the, more than just Timpview.
More than just district. So, this is super helpful for Wendy, cause we just, we don't have a lot of meeting rooms in the district.
Is everybody oriented where this would be? So, this is like the northwest corner, so the new academic wing is, would be on the top right.
The old main entrance for the last couple of years is right there.
Yeah, those are the doors.
Okay, so this is up, this is the new wing up here. These, this will be our, this will be the entrance.
That goes into the green hall right there.
But this is, yep. So, and then this is the presentation room, and on the other side, so keep, go down to the next one. The ne, this is the-
That's still the presentation room.
Admin. So, this is where your assistant principals are, um, and your finance office. So, conference room, all the assistant principals, social worker, instructional coach, will have offices with the, with the, the reception area, um, with the secretaries, and just nurses, a lot of that area. And then-
And next, the main entrance to the light with the doors.
Correct. This is, yep.
So, that's interesting.
And that was one of the issues that we had, that we asked them to change. There were just gonna be too many secure entrances that the, that the secretarial staff was gonna have to manage. So, we're, we're still trying to keep it down, where the other one will be, um, limited to one, one main entrance. This is the auditorium, and a lot of the classrooms, the performing arts classrooms. Uh, there is a little theater up here, that this one was decreased a little bit, uh, well, it was significant, but it was a, a much bigger little theater than, than Provo High had, and really what was necessary. So, um, and then this is our CTE areas. This is where, um, some changes went, cause we were really trying to make sure that the areas, and you'll see on the, on the spreadsheet, that it has the differences, um, the, the couple of the shop areas were a lot bigger in the plan, and because the, the programs are a little smaller or about the same size at, as Provo High, that, that area, those areas were brought down to be a little bit more, uh, the same. But they have, um, it's some really good space. So. Anyway, they are ready to start. Now, the question is, is, um, generally, I would bring the contract to you when it's finished and-
Do I have to show them the second floor?
Oh, so sorry, yes. So, up here, this is our special ed, no, this is art right here. So, these are the art classrooms. There was an, a, a extra classroom that was removed as we were starting to shrink some of the space, but this is our art area, and then I think there's one more for special ed. So, this is our special ed, um, area with the offices and the classrooms with some of those, um, what are they called?
A timeout room.
Sensory room. Sensory room, thank you.
And those are the second floor.
It's a timeout for me.
Those are the second floor above the administration and counseling.
I'm a finance person, I have a timeout room at my house, and my family sends it to, so. What's that big gray area? It says fan room. Mechanical. Yeah, mechanical for that second floor.
To store all their fans. It's not, I didn't know.
Oh.
Wow, gee.
Well, it's all of the students who are fans.
It's not an extra room.
For that one, like, shows on the side.
Yes. Are we, are we questioning?
Sure.
Um, what, where did we land with the band? Storage of drums and large instruments? So, that's a very question. We're hoping we get the information tomorrow for our meeting with the CBO, um, on how many they actually need. Uh, we're looking at decreasing that size just a little bit more. It's a lot less expensive to buy a Conex and put it outside the classroom to store than it is to, to build space for unused instruments. Or seldom-used instruments.
Cheryl, have you gotten the list of instruments from Mommy yet?
No.
Are they equipped on the list?
She didn't, she didn't, so I should be coming in.
Do we have a question?
Did, uh, engineer, I thought that's where she was supposed to send it, didn't know.
Oh, I thought she was like, okay, fine, no. I said she sent it to the engineer, to the architect.
Architect, yeah. I don't know, I'll find out.
I'll find, he's been emailing me through meetings, so-
Melanie, you have a question?
So, both Lisa and I are on the second floor by the art, and why is the health classroom so big?
Just curious about it. I mean, do we need that size?
There was a reason for it, and I cannot remember.
And I cannot remember.
I feel like we got rid of the health classroom.
There was, uh, we were short a health classroom. It was gonna be an art room. You could split that, you could split that into two classrooms. We can ask the question, cause they will have taken lots of really good notice.
Okay.
Cause I don't know why they did that.
And you wanna explain where we're at in the process for things to address?
So, right now, I've got the first half of the AIA for them to start the cafeteria. Um, we won't adjust that contract and approve the full thing until we have the, the hard bids for the new part of Timpview, so that we have a better idea of what it looks like. Um, there, there, I just need to give them the, um, notice to proceed so that they can start a lot of that work in the cafeteria. The plan right now is, Mommy's done awesome, uh, working with their programs to make sure that they have, from the twelfth until the twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth of July, where there will be no one in the building, because there will be a lot of time where utilities will be out, because we have to cut those pipes, um, both electrical, um, water, a lot of that, to get those piers in place down in the basement. And I did ask again, should we just have done this from scratch? Because I think this is a pain, but every single engineer that I talked to said this, it would be way more expensive to do it again. So, they'll spend that six weeks, um, getting all of that done and a lot of the demolition done. Their goal is to get that steel finished before school gets back in, so there's not a lot of noise.
And then, could you explain the process for these plans that the construction committee has been looking at?
So, this next phase for this one, they're working on the schematics that they will send to the subcontractors to get bids. So, Westland will take these, send them out to their subcontractors to get the bids to finish that, then we'll get the final bid, and they'll do an adjustment on the AIA for the full contract amount, and that will, and then, and they'll start the, but they'll start the cafeteria.
But basically, after tomorrow's meeting, we're, we're pretty much locked in to what the committee has worked on and the meeting.
To this setup.
And I will tell you right now that the contractor and the architect loved having the board members, so thank you for all of your guys' time.
Melanie, you were there everything.
Because I heard, it made a huge difference so that you guys, so that I, I think it's important for you to know some of those decisions that are made and some of the requests that are made, so you can, um, better address constituents who are wondering why we make decisions that we did, so.
Lisa?
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure all of the coaches and teachers and people understand clearly that they can't access them or use the campus over the summer.
Yep, yep, that's all been, that's, they've worked it, all of the coaches and all of the staff. Um, Mommy did ask if her staff could be in the building. Um, I said, that, that would be a little bit of a challenge, cause there's, might be no electricity, no plumbing, um, no cool air, uh, so it's, uh, and maybe having a few days here and there would be really confusing for the, for the public if they're, so, they were going to look at using some of the rooms at Centennial over the summer, where they, their parents could come and pay fees and be able to come and meet with-
And some, their summer programs. She told the PTA last week that the, they're looking at combining summer school forces with independent, and they had finalized dates, but if it goes the way she was talking, hoping they would be at independent. Darren, what do you think about that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll probably, um, solidify that Thursday, if that's been the topic.
But that's what they're working on. And then, she also told the parents that they were planning to have, yeah, admin, and then the month the counselors are around would still be at Timpview in their wing, so, that might change. But they kinda take July off a lot anyway. All right, other questions?
I do, I wanna go back to the band. I, I was at Shoreline yesterday, and I, I don't, like, the band storage, are they actually going up? Because that was, it looked like that's how Shoreline was utilizing the shore, uh, the instrument's storage, is because, you know, there's one on top of another, and-
The, the plans that I've seen, it were going up. It wasn't just a single layer, it was, it was stacked.
And, um, I am, I don't feel comfortable with this room that's in between, um, where is it? It's in between the principal's offices and the counseling office.
So, the green will be, I believe.
Yeah, the green room.
Wendy, you wanna-
Because it's, there's not an equivalent at Provo High School.
There, there actually is.
And what is it, and where is it?
It's the presentation room right off of the commons is the, is the comparable space, and so that's why you'll see on the, on the plans that it has a Provo High School footage as well as the Timpview High School footage. And this is why, one, one of the problems that we're facing is I don't have a place to bring all principals and assistant principals and, like, coaches into a single room to do training during the school year. We have to rent space at Pro, at Provo Library, or at the Marriott, or whatever. They need a space somewhere in the district, and since we're building Timpview, this would give us that access to be able to do that. And so, that, I'm the one that's advocating for that, because the district needs that space for some of our professional learning as well, so.
And we did decrease it by a few hundred square feet by not having that kitchenette on the edge, so it, that, um-
And I think we would, we used to be twenty-five hundred square.
Yeah, it's two thousand, yeah. Throw it down to a hundred square feet.
So, that's not a Provo High member in the-
No.
No, the, that's a different document.
Okay.
Oh, right here, yeah.
Oh, right here, yeah.
So, on, sorry to jump ahead, but on the, um, employee survey, one of the, they had not enough space for, like, nurses and stuff? And I don't even, where, where did it go?
The nurse was very happy with what she saw.
Yeah, so it's right off the reception room, so if you look, there's the finance office here in the corner.
There it is.
And the nurses room.
And she, she was in there in meetings, and she was very happy with it.
Yeah, I know she was, but-
And that hasn't really changed from what we originally had. So.
I'm just hoping that it's big enough. I mean, that was one of the concerns in the survey.
Right.
Was not enough space for nurses.
And it's a balance, right? And that's, as the committee, that's where we kinda kept going back and forth on some of the things, is we wanna make sure we have adequate space, that we don't, a year later, three years later, like has happened at Provo High, right? Like, why did they choose to make this section so small? And, and you can't go back, in most cases, and easily change that. And yet, you also wanna be good stewards of resources, and also, we looked at, um, equity between the two high schools. Um, now, we didn't always make it totally equal, because we recognized we have a bigger population at Timpview, but we did look and compare, um, to try to keep them as close as possible as we could, I think, so. But yeah, it's a good point, Mary, we wanna make sure we do it right, right?
Yeah.
Any other questions about Timpview architect plans or construction?
Um, I do, on the, um, auditorium, didn't we get rid of the concessions ticket?
We kept the ticket, we added some storage, cause they still wanted that piece.
But they still wanted the ticket, not even though they don't. I think it was just a, they're, they're putting it in, not as like a finished office that they could finish later, but they're using it more for storage, to be able to have tables in it that they can pull out to do the tickets, because that was the common point. In here, if you look at it, it looks like there's like-
Let's have the committee tomorrow check, cause Mommy wasn't in at the last meeting.
Because they'll check tomorrow, yeah.
Yeah. All right? Okay, you guys, we're still on time.
So, just to reiterate, we'll, we'll give them, sorry, I'm not, I promise a whole-
What are you doing right now?
No, you catch us up on the next one. The, we'll go ahead and do the notice to proceed on the cafeteria so we can really make the most out of the summer. And then, once we get that full contract on that, with the next one, we'll come and approve the full construction, the AIA contract, so. Unless anyone has a concern with the cafeteria starting.
Let's do a sweep for it.
All right, see, I'm still, we're still ahead.
Thank you, Devin. Okay, item number 10, we're going to go back to Devin for board pay recommendation.
Okay, so Bonnie, would you bring up the? So what I did was did some looking and tried to match the pay with basically our, our minimum wage, not high school minimum wage, but our wage that we pay someone who comes in. And then, once we get that up, then I will explain my, my process. So, in my, personally, I, I feel like you guys do way more work than what I've calculated, but I've tried to balance a little bit of what we're working on. So, on the, so the current, about the top is the current. So the 680 a month, at the very base wage, which is 1,471, it would mean that the board leadership was working 41 hours a week, a month, and you guys were working 33. And considering how many hours I'm in meetings with you each month, I know that it's, it's not, you're working a lot more hours than that. So my, my suggestion and my recommendation is to move to 900 a month for board leadership.
Wow, that's really little.
Thank you. No, you're good. Whoever can see that gets a bonus. Board leadership would be 900 a month, which is about 61 hours. And I, I rounded a bit, 61 hours a month, and then the board would get 750, which is a difference overall of $23,000. So not a big enough difference to, to move a needle on any of the others, but I think a little bit fair of a process and as much of a remuneration as we can give.
Can you reiterate how you calculated that that equals equivalent, you know, 41 hours or 51?
So if you, so 61 hours times 1,471, which is, yeah, 1,471 is the hourly rate that I used, which is our lane one, step one, which is.
I mean, I get paid $15 an hour, paid a crap. You know what, my husband thinks I make $0.70 an hour, so.
Well, I mean, this is at least giving a, a few more hours.
Are, are we going to, like, have some kind of, I know the city council and the mayor have their pay commission thing, are we gonna?
That's part of their policy, we don't have that as part of the policy. And it's never been part of a, a study or a committee. It's just been really making sure that we can get really good board members like we have and at least making it a little bit palatable to be spending as much time as you guys do at the job. I know it's not as much as you deserve, but I, we need to balance, you know, the appropriateness with the amount. And I, I have zero qualms about making the change.
It's not so much the, the amount of money, it's more like, because it's been so long since this was looked at, along with a whole lot of other things that have been looked at, like, are we gonna, like, start having this every, looked at every 10 years or 15 years?
We talked about putting it into a policy that we would reevaluate board pay, like, every four years is one thing. We could also, we could also put into policy, this would be something for policy committee to look at, where the, we can look at what the average raise is for our employees and then we automatically add that to the board so that you're getting annual increases and it's keeping up in that way with then maybe a further evaluation every four years. So we could, we can, our goal is, we want to put it into a policy because then it doesn't feel like you're bringing it up just for the sake of bringing it up and that it, it really is just part of the way which we do things. It's a trigger, we need to do the same thing with boundaries. Like, that's another policy that needs to be in place where every five years or every, you know, whatever, we're doing a boundary and feasibility study to just report on things. That way, it doesn't feel like it's so political in that process.
Anybody have any questions?
Lisa has a concern.
She's scrunched up her face.
She did.
I'm sorry. Go for it.
I don't, I, I'm really grateful and I think this is really generous. I, I recognize that it's not like an hourly wage that someone would make at a separate job that they have, but I also recognize that the choice to run is also one not, it's not necessarily for career advancement or for a job. So I, I get that there are balances there too. I met a lot of people at NSBA who don't get paid anything at all. So just putting that all in perspective, I just keep thinking about the timing and our construction and just reading through all of those survey answers, which I felt privileged to read and I also felt a little emotional about just all the needs that we have. So for me, it's just a question of is this the right time to do this or could we wait a year? And anyway, that's, my case is if I don't want to undermine anyone's work or, and I recognize that I, I speak in a position of, you know, privilege here and so I'm just, it's hard for me to think of this right now, just given how many things and how many people I desperately want to be able to greater compensate and, and make sure they know how important they are too, so that's all.
I think one of the things that would be important is I've had conversations with Kristy Giblin over PEA and she's strongly in support of seeing the board be compensated more appropriately. I think our teachers and our employees recognize how, how mindful our Board of Education is, how you are all as board members in, in really trying to meet the needs of employees and keeping that at the forefront. I mean, they're a major part of our strategic plan and, and I think, I think this is one way in which they also feel like they could express some appreciation is to put their support behind that. And they support that, our district leadership team supports that, so.
Gina.
I think I would also be more in favor of waiting a year if, in a year, I thought we'd be in a better place. I don't think we're ever going to be in a better place, at least not in the next decade. I don't think we're going to be in a better place.
It's like waiting to have a baby till you're ready.
Yeah.
It's a very good analogy, actually.
And I also think, and I, and I agree, there are some people that we met at NSBA who didn't get paid, but I, one of the things when Devin brought it forward was she looked at the pay for, for districts here locally, right? And I feel like we need to, not we don't need to be, but I think looking at, being in line with the districts along the lines at front of similar, or doing similar size and things like that. But I totally, I understand and I, I think very similarly about some of that. I just, I, I think if we're going to get people who want to run, because now they see what we're doing, right? I tell people, you need to run when I'm done, and they're like, how much do you make? I'm like, 480, I make, no, 10 cents a hour. And they don't want to run. So 1,441 is not, I mean, it's not the best in the world, but I think it's also will maybe encourage people, in my area, people cannot afford, right? And so, I, anyway.
That's what I was going to say, like, I'm not going to be on the board forever. Someone's going to replace me and I want someone who feels like they're actually being compensated. Because what if this is part of their livelihood? And how they can pay the bills?
But I, I agree with what, I agree with you.
And to be fair, on my side, I picked a, a number that was not going to be detrimental to trying to do increases and, I mean, it, it is a small amount, so, ish.
Hey. So, nothing would happen till we approve a new budget anyway in a few months. So if in the meantime, anyone has any other thoughts, please send them to Gina and I and then we can aggregate them and pass those along as we think through things.
And I'll also put it for policy committee too.
Okay, item number 11, we're going to review some policies.
Oh my gosh, I'm so excited, okay, here we go. I'm going to take over the screen. This is school guardians, people. This is very exciting. Okay, let's see, oh, excellent, okay. So, the policy, I can't remember who it was in policy committee that says, basically, we have a policy for school guardians because we're required to have a policy for school guardians. So here's our policy for school guardians. Bingo, that's what it is, okay. That is what it is. We did put it under operations. It, it is being housed under student services, but it just makes more sense under finance and operations because that's where all of our school safety stuff is. And so we put it at 6801. But I want to direct your attention more to the actual procedure, which is where this lines, this piece out and some different questions that came up. Jason Garrison was at, incidentally, I believe, the shooting range today, so he wasn't able to answer all of my questions. I know, it's a little funny, but he is going to have all of those questions answered by the time we meet as a policy committee, so we'll leave that out there. But I have a couple of questions that comes up. And so there's different types of training that are laid out for a school guardian. There is annual training and you'll see all of those specific components that every single individual must undergo. There is biannual training, and by the way, that is the correct word. Biannual does mean twice a year, biennial means every other year. I asked you out GPT, yes, I did, because I was like, because I thought, I don't.
Does the state call it biannual?
Yes, so this comes straight from there.
I'm used to calling it semiannual.
I would, it's semiannual or biannual, it's totally fine. But biennial is every other year. You're welcome, I learned so many things, so, more vocabulary.
Thank you, state, for just confusing everything.
It goes to Gina. Then this one is, so the annual training is more about the firearm safety. Notice it does have de-escalation tactics on line 32, which is an important part. And people have talked about the role of mental health in incidents and disability awareness. This is something our SROs go through quite extensively. Granted, it's a four-hour training, so take that for what that is. And then, biannual training is twice yearly and this is more catered towards the specific school that a person is assigned to. The one question that I had is, we do have school guardians, like, we have, I was going to point them out, and then I realized I can't point them out. I'm not looking at anybody who might be a school guardian. There are individuals that are at the district office that are assigned to be substitutes. I don't know what that looks like if they have to be familiar with every single school site or what that looks like. So that was a question I had for Jason Garrison.
Can I ask a question about that? Who's, who is providing each of these trainings?
So it's.
I can see on that top one, but the second one.
It's Provo City PD that does the, that does the training for us, so.
I would ask a more specific question about that because some people have undergone that already, but I'm afraid to have them answer right now. So they could maybe send me a text message and tell me what that looks like and then I can read the text message and answer that, or we're all asleep.
Love it.
Or it might have eye rolled at me, but that's okay.
I'm curious, I'll tag along to Lisa's question. Does the, is the Provo PD just doing that or are we paying?
We don't pay them, it, it comes, it comes as a contract through the state, through the state security grant. So part of the money, so like, when they talk about that money came with this bill, none of that money is coming to the schools. That money is going towards the state's security person, they have regional individuals, it's going to pay for all of the training, to pay for the psychologists to do all of the mental health checks. That's what that money goes for, is what I agree.
Thank you.
You bet. You can look up this section that defines what a firearm is. I'll let you decide if you need more clarification on what a firearm is. And then, notice that it has initial training. And this is where they have to go to a firearms range, they have to know about all of the current laws, appropriate use of force. And notice situational response evaluations about when they, you know, securing, how they control information, notify law enforcement, all of it. This is just laying out what the, what the state is making sure that every single training program is going to entail. The other thing that I asked about was it states that this employee has to be a volunteer. And there was, there were a lot of questions about, how are you an employee if you're a volunteer? It means that I can't force an employee to be a school guardian. So I can't say, your employment in this position as a custodian means you have to be a school guardian. So if we have a school that, where there literally is no employee that wants to be a school guardian, then we write that into the state as an exception and say, we do not currently have anyone that wants to be a school guardian and they will grant us that exception. So that can happen. I, I don't, I believe there might be, Jared, is there one school? There's two that I think were in that position right now.
Because of employee turnover every year, do you have to ask every year who wants to be it?
Generally, if the person is volunteering to be it, I mean, we would just verify with them that they would want to continue in that capacity at any point.
Well, no, I mean, like, at the two schools.
Oh, yes, we would, we could, we could, yes.
Does the next year, you would say, does anyone?
Hey, does anybody want to be a school guard? Yes, absolutely, yep, great question.
And we do not, if a community member was like, I would like to volunteer to be the school guardian at this school, we don't, I hope, here locally.
We don't, are not going to.
They have to be an employee.
They have to be an employee. So notice it says. I was going to clarify that because a couple people have asked me. That's because in the original legislation, as they were originally talking about, they talked about them being volunteers and there was confusion about what that looked like. So that's also what I wanted to clarify. Notice that it's not supposed to be a principal or a teacher, someone who has to be primarily responsible for the safety of kids, but pretty much anybody else can serve in that, in that capacity. Then it talks about the state's security chief, who's Matt Pennington, is the one that oversees this program, ensures what it includes, and then they're working with the county sheriff's department, who then contracts with other agencies. So that's where the county sheriff is contracting with Provo City PD to provide that training for us. And then, notice on line 116, it has all of the requirements that they're eligible to join the program if the school administrator approves. So ultimately, a principal can say, I don't care if you want to be a school guardian, you don't get to be a school guardian. So, so there is that administrative oversight if they have concerns about an individual that they felt should not be in that particular position. They have to.
Question on that, if there was more than one person that wants to volunteer to do this, does the principal get to make the final decision who that person's going to be?
No, we usually have more than one because you usually have a situation of where you need a substitute in case, so you want backup on that. So, most of our schools have more than one person identified. And then you have to be able to hold a valid concealed and carry permit and that everybody verifies that they've undergone the training and the mental health screening, that's part of that. And the mental health screening includes like a written exam of over 300 questions and then a personal interview that's tied to it, so. I'm checking my text messages in case I have some valuable information here. It says, step one, complete concealed carry class with Utah County Sheriff. Step two, complete Provo PD training where unsafe scenarios working with law enforcement are reviewed. Step three, complete mental health fit to carry process, written quiz, 376 questions, and individual interviews. Step four is the gun range, eight hours total. And step five, you're now a guardian, congratulations.
So nice and clear, thank you.
And then, notice that the state is providing a one-time stipend of $500. So you get it one time from the state. We're trying to find out where that money is coming from because Devin and I have not heard where that amount is coming from, but we have heard that, so we don't know what that's coming through.
I'm skeptical.
It was in the bill too.
Yeah, it is in the bill.
Is that one time for the school or one time for the person? Like, if the person does it one year and then changes their mind or moves?
And then they just get it once, but.
But if another person fills it, they get 500.
Yep. And so if a person does it for 10 years, they get $500 for 10 years.
And that's assuming that the funding is renewed every year.
You are so simple.
So, this is the question I have about funding. So, this is something that's coming from the state legislature that's underfunded, correct?
Yes.
What would happen if we did not do this because we're saying we don't have the funds to do it?
It's not an option.
No.
This is not an option.
Even though they're not providing us the fund?
Doesn't matter. It's, it's like one of those things, you're out of compliance with the law, like, you can't break the law. We cannot break the law.
Even though they're not providing us the.
Doesn't matter. It's, it's like provide, it's like the federal government requiring you to provide ADA access to buildings. They don't provide you for the funding to do ADA access, but if you don't do it, you are penalized. It's against the law, you can't do it. If that makes sense?
And they did write it in, that it's a volunteer position, right?
Now, the school guardian then also is eligible for a. Now, the school guardian then also is eligible for a safe, that is a biometric safe, so that the individual can store the firearm if they don't want to carry it around. And somebody's like, what is the point of a school guardian if they're not actually carrying the weapon around? This to me would be like, if I'm gonna go eat lunch or something, and I don't wanna have the weapon on me at that particular moment, you have to put it in a safe, and the state will reimburse us, reimburse the individual, reimburse us, and then we reimburse the individual up to five hundred dollars. We also, I have not received confirmation of where that money is coming from either.
Again, my question though, with regards to that is, I would assume if, that having a school guardian, armed guardian means they are always armed in the building. I mean, so you're saying there's a chance you could be like, well darn, I was at lunch when that happened, and my firearm was in its safe.
This was exactly the question that I asked Jason, was if I'm buying the safe, what, under what circumstances would a person take the weapon off? Because you also can't put it in the safe if you leave the building. So the person has to be in the building when it's in the safe.
I thought that bill about the safes was for individual teachers who wanted.
There's both.
It's separate.
It's both, that's a separate bill.
There is.
So it's in both the bills?
Can we put in policy that if someone is an armed guardian and they store their firearm, they have first checked with the alternate armed guardian that they are carrying? And I mean, if the assumption is truly that this is required to keep our students safe, then I feel like that means we, and we invest money, which we're doing, which is money that's having to be reallocated from other needs that we have, that then, we're not gonna invest that and then have it be that it just happened that when there was a crisis, their firearm was in the safe.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna say two things with this, and then if there are other people.
I feel like there are other people that might be testing me.
Really, truly, any input.
I'm just trying to understand, I'm not trying to put undue burden, truly, I'm just trying to understand.
No, of course, so one of the, one of the concerns that I would have with that is not every school has a backup guardian, so then if that is the case, then we're putting somebody else out in that respect. The second piece of this is, it has not been easy to secure these people. And so anytime we add another, like, you can't do this, and they'll just say, never mind, I don't wanna do this. Like there's, this is way too much pressure, so I worry a little bit about that becoming the response if we start putting those constraints.
But we are paying money to have armed guardians, and then we're gonna pay money for a safe.
Let's get to the money, because it's not a lot.
Okay.
Can I ask on line one forty-six, number three?
Yes.
So does that mean whoever's the armed guardian has to bring the gun to school every morning and take it home every night?
Yep, that's exactly what that means. You can't leave it in, you can't leave it there.
And then I had a question on line one thirty-four. Shouldn't it be the state's security chief and the county's security chief? Because the county guy also does this stuff, right?
Yes, but I think it's just implying that the state's security chief shall, they have to actually have that report come to them. I can ask that clarification, this is just coming straight from model policy, so I, we can ask that.
And then the blue line, I, it shows blue on ours, but when I'm looking at yours, you have a comment, so okay, that answers my question.
Yep. Then the other piece, as we come down here, notice that they have the ability to take action against a threat. A school may designate, notice it says a single volunteer or multiple volunteers, the department. I'm not positive who this department is. So I'm guessing it's the state's school security department, but that was another question that I have of Jason Garrison, I didn't feel like that that was very clear there. Notice that the school guardian is not liable for damages if these conditions exist that are listed in number twelve, number thirteen. If they, notice this one on line one seventy-nine, if the school guardian points a firearm at an individual, then a report has to be generated, that includes this information. And then everybody's reviewing it to determine if that was a reasonable situation for the individual to hold the weapon.
That was my other question on line one eighty-five, was the report's supposed to go to the state's security chief, but shouldn't the county also know? Because I think earlier it says the county sheriff does something. Oh, no, it's on number fourteen, where he says the school guardian may have designation revoked at any time by the principal, the county sheriff, or the state's security chief. So how can the county sheriff do the revoking if he's not giving the report?
Excellent, wait, there we go. Good reading, you guys are so awesome. Okay, then it gives information that it's not grandma-able, who is the school guardian, you can't ask for that. These are the only individuals who can know. And then, and then anyone who gives this information out, it's guilty of a class of misdemeanor, so don't share. Then we added this part, the compensation for school guardians. So the school guardians, number one, is will be reimbursed a specified amount as determined by district leadership for a gun, ammunition, and other necessary items for the individual to conceal and carry the weapon on school grounds. We have determined at this point in time that that is a reimbursable expense up to twelve hundred dollars. And so that is per year, correct, Devin?
Yep. Well, no, it's one time, and then they'll get an ammunition.
And then they get an ammunition amount after that.
And the gun belongs to the individual.
And to the individual, because that's required by, for a concealed and carry, it can't belong to an organization, it has to belong to a person. School guardians are then reimbursed up to five hundred dollars for a biometric safe. This goes back to Jennifer's question, anyone who wants to conceal and carry, who passes, who has a concealed and carry, can request a biometric safe and also have a safe for their classroom. They don't have to be a school guardian to carry out of school, but they still have to have a safe where they can secure their weapon when they're on school grounds, if they're not walking around with it. School guardians will also receive a stipend, and the reason we kept this as determined by district leadership is because this could change. And then the amount that we did, Devin reminded me, is a thousand dollars per semester. So it's two thousand dollars total. So I think the thing we have to keep in mind is that this is a lot of responsibility that we're placing on an individual, and we're basically paying them two thousand dollars to do this, because everything else is just a reimbursable expense, and then the state somehow is coming in one time with five hundred dollars. And so this is where the conversation's coming, is if this is so important, most of the superintendents that I talked to say, if this is that important, we need to be providing that money towards school resource officers in every single building, so that, and these would just be backups, but that is not what's happening here. So just kinda keep that in mind, please.
Are we doing this at like Oak Springs and Lake Canyon, or?
They have their own.
We don't have to worry about that. Those are state buildings, they're not, they're not.
We just provide the education services.
I just wonder, we just provide the education.
First reasons we can also make any adjustments, but was there anything else, anyone felt they had to share in meeting today before we move on?
Oh, we're behind.
That's my fault.
No, it's not.
No, but I think it's important that we have lots of questions, because this is a random main policy going into our school.
Absolutely, so if you have questions, but if you have, like, I submitted some questions I was gonna ask out loud today, but I'm like, I don't mean to ask them out loud, I send them on policy committee. But is there anything else anyone wants to ask, right here?
You can also send it to policy committee, we'll look at it again next week. The other piece of this is, we're gonna leave this to not be approved until probably May, so that we can make sure that we're getting all of the updates to legislation. If there's anything that's changed, I want Jason Garrison's eyes on that, so that we can just adopt this once and be done.
Do we have this on the website?
We will now, we will now, yeah. The next policy is sixty-seven fifty, we've always had this, the district emergency response plan. This is something we've done that our school district safety and security committee oversees. This plan is available, it's what we, we've just always had it and always followed through with this. The one question that I had here was on lines one twenty-five through one twenty-seven. I don't know how this is done, how written notice of certain pertinent portions of the district plan? That was a question that I had for Jason Garrison, so he'll have that answer for us. And then I believe there was a question about reunification, and what kinds of services are being provided to a student during that reunification? I think it's right here on lines one oh eight and one oh nine. If we have a student with a significant disability, for example, and they have a one-on-one aide, even if we have released, let's say they're a high school student, even if they have released that individual, everybody else to the parents, notice it says, such plan shall provide for reasonable care and supervision of students until the student is released to the responsible party. We're gonna add a specific piece of that, because for students with disabilities, a student that's in grade nine or above would need to probably still have those services available. If we're thinking about like maybe toileting services, or whatever that might be that's part of their plan, we need to make sure that parents are assured that we're not gonna just, everybody just abandons and they gotta figure out where their child is, so we just wanna make that clear. Any questions? Okay. I will stop.
Okay, no other questions? All right, thank you, and yeah, those will now go on the website, and we'll revisit them in a month.
Yep.
Okay. Item number twelve, we're gonna have Caleb come up and share with us the disaggregated data from the employee priority survey, as we're looking at our budget for next year and teacher salary impacts.
Hey, so this is the survey we discussed a little bit at the all-day board meeting. We've got the final results, and we broke it all out. The first section is the certified employees, that includes our proptech employees and admin. And then at the end, the last five or seven slides is the classified employee survey. This is just a quick shot of where people worked that took the, took the survey. Go on to the next one, and you can kinda see the breakdown on the, on the certified side of things, mostly teachers. For this first question about priorities, for a lot of the slides, I have it broken down by secondary and elementary, unless there wasn't really any significant difference, they were within one or two percent of all, on all levels of the answers. So go on. So as you broke, as I broke there, looked at the results of all levels, this pattern was consistent all along, where the equitable salaries was by far the top preference, and then insurance, PTO.
So if I'm reading that right, staffing and classroom rates is number four?
As far as ranking these five things for the employee.
And that was the same, both on elementary and secondary?
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to find out, because I didn't know that, I thought that would switch, and it didn't switch.
Okay.
That's helpful to know.
Go on to the next one. There are several questions about insurance and PTO, and once again, on all levels, these answers are all very close together, so we, I didn't break it out by level. Are they currently enrolled in the assurance? If they haven't enrolled, would a stipend for opting out make the district's benefit package more attractive to you? We can go through these as fast as you guys want them.
Can I ask a question about that one? If you are not enrolled, would a stipend for opting out make the district's benefits path? What is that asking about? I couldn't figure it out.
It's like if they give them money.
But that would be if you are enrolled, right?
Yeah, it would be, I think that one.
It should get supported.
Okay.
I don't think it's asking what, if not, it was asking.
So what basically we were asking is, would a stipend help you not pick up the package benefits, the benefits for the insurance benefit?
That's how I took it.
But I don't think that's what it actually says.
For those who have declined it, how important, what is a stipend for that? And then, everybody wants the premiums lower.
Shocker.
I'm surprised thirty-three percent said no. How important is the district contribution to HSA if you're in the high deductible plan? Then the bottom one, would you be willing to accept smaller salary raises if it meant we could lower the premiums or contribute, give a higher contribution to HSA? The PTO, would the support system allow to roll over of unused days, even if that means fewer days? Then they could specify what their preferred PTO structure is.
The one thing that you need to be aware of is the more that our cost for subs by switching over to PTO has increased significantly as a result, that has become a major cost for the district. And so that might be something that our teachers are really wanting in terms of that. It's not cost-effective for us in that way, and so Devin and I have kind of brainstormed to, like, do we give a bonus, for example, to people who use two or fewer days to try to incentivize them to use less if we don't have a rollover? So that would be in place of that. So there's some other things that we can do to, to encourage them to use fewer days, but still reward them for using those fewer days, so.
And then we have student behavior questions, this is where there's some differentiation between levels, and even between, there's a few slides where I broke it down even farther, between high school and middle school, where there's some differences. So this first question, how would you raise student behavior in your classroom this year as compared to last year? We see the asterisk on secondary, that's where there is, the next slide has high school and middle school broken apart. That looks like that's the wrong information, but.
I think elementary, when I looked at, fifty percent said it got worse.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right.
And then here's the high school and the middle school, middle school had fifty-one percent say it had actually improved.
Oh, go middle school, good job.
Feel adequately supported by school administration on top and district administration on the bottom. These were similar all throughout, so I haven't broken them out. There was an open-ended question that, what are some things that would help student behaviors? You guys have all of them in Board Dogs, this is AI helping me, kind of limited, narrowed down to the, in this case, eight most frequently answered or given items.
Do we have this summary in Board Dog?
Not, not yet, I got this put together today, but we'll, we can get it to you.
That would be great.
And this is actually in order of most to least.
Which is surprising, because that doesn't match with what they want.
And remember, this is just about what things are gonna help student behaviors. They know that salary's not gonna help student behavior. So that's why, once salary and insurance have been taken care of, what you are seeing is, yes, I do think class size and resource allocation, and I hope that helps, makes sense, yeah. So this, this seems.
But it's still in there, though, higher, number four, higher pay improves compensation.
Yes, it is. But it seems like.
Just ignore everything I just said. Well, no, these are just targeted comments, it's just people, couple individuals who specifically mentioned.
But it made it to number four, I mean, I got it all.
Yeah, I didn't. Well, and I would read that, number four, as is specifically saying higher compensation for challenging roles.
Right.
So, which I think that's a little bit different than just general salary increases.
Oh, thanks for saving me, I can feel better now.
Well, yeah, I mean.
So willing to accept smaller salary raises if it meant more funding for additional behavior support staff or resources? Once again, middle and high school are split out on the next slide. Overall, for the most part, they don't want salaries to, or raises to be smaller to be able to get these other things.
Yeah.
Can I ask a quick question, like about salary increases? I'm trying to see if I can suss it out with the questions. Some of the comments did seem like there was a concern that it was gonna, they were gonna get, lose pay. Does that make sense, as opposed to just not getting an increase? It was like their salary was gonna go down.
In fact, I had to go back and re-read the way the question was written.
So salary could go down if insurance goes up. So if the insurance cost goes up, and, and they're asking the district to pick up a bigger cost, or let's say we shove more of that cost onto the employee as a result, to benefit of that, and I'm a person who has my whole family on insurance versus just myself, and that insurance cost goes up, I could see a decrease. and that insurance cost goes up, I could see a decrease in pay. So that would be a situation.
No steps and no cola in there.
This sound, just sounded like you're saying, even if it's not take away, even if it's just less of an increase, it did sound like.
Yeah, people thought, you were like. Outside even insurance deliberately like, oh no, we're just gonna do less. But what you're saying makes sense too.
Just asking if they've experienced loss of aides support staff this year. Big difference between secondary and elementary in this one. And then I remember right on the next slide, there's a pretty good difference between these two levels as well.
That's interesting.
How has it impacted your ability to manage the workload? These were fairly close, but there was enough of a difference that we included them all.
I have a question back on the other slide when it was asking about have you lost? Could this be volunteers too, or is this just?
Just like instruction.
Classroom aides.
Yeah, go up one more slide and you'll see how significant it was in elementary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So meaning.
So as our money.
Have you experienced a loss of, like this year or just from year to year? I'm just curious.
So this is the first year.
The year before, we've had lots of aides in the classrooms. This year with the loss of us, your money, we've had to lose a bunch of aides.
Got it. Thank you. I think the other thing that you're seeing too, in some of the schools that had higher numbers of aides, their overall enrollment, like when you look at their enrollment has dropped and so their class sizes may have gone up. Or they, their principal has used their discretionary funds to pay for an additional teacher instead of for aides. And so they've seen those pieces of it. As behaviors have increased, you'll see principals making a choice to hire a certified behavior support specialist. And they're, I mean, that's at a cost of over a hundred thousand dollars. That, that would be the equivalent of like two and a half instructional aides that, that go throughout. But that's a choice that that principal is making. Some of the, some of the feedback I would give to that principal is what does your data show? Does your data actually show that your behavior is decreasing because you have that behavior specialist? Cuz if you're paying for that behavior specialist and your behavior is actually increasing, then there's a different problem that's happening and that might not be the best use of your money. You gotta, you gotta keep going back to what your data show.
Within the survey, we can't get into all these details of what, what can affect these. So all of these are kind of more the surface level questions. And then as you guys are having discussions and making decisions, that's when we can start communicating out those, those other pieces that go deeper. Maybe go to the next one. We looked at that one. So what support helped mitigate the loss of the classroom aides? And then on the next slide, they had the other option where they could give the answers.
It seemed funny to have additional staffing, like mitigate the loss of your aide.
Do you mean hire an aide back?
Yeah, I'll take that one.
Go on to the next slide. And so this is, once again, these are in order from most suggested to least suggested.
And higher pay will help them become.
It does make you.
Helps you feel better about yourself. How burned out you are.
Going back to another one, I think that's kind of how they were approaching it, where if you're paying me more, I'm willing to deal with more.
Yeah.
Another one that we accept smaller salary raises or higher insurance costs if it meant we could give you more classroom aides or staff. Second, when you split it between the two, middle school is a little bit more willing to talk about things. Still not that much, but a little bit more.
An aide is not super helpful in high school classes.
Okay. We asked, they could give anything else up to three items that we should consider, the board, you guys should consider. And these were the top, top suggestions again. A lot of ways, all the open-ended responses are very similar. We'll get a couple different things like this one. Gets into multilingual learners and special ed a little bit, but a lot of the same things on all the open-ended responses.
Anyway, we'll share those with you.
I'm surprised we didn't see attendance on there cuz when I was reading them, there was a lot of people talking about the attendance policy.
And that doesn't mean that it's not listed a bunch. This was me asking ChatGPT to read it and tell me what was the most.
Yeah.
But attendance did come up.
All right. Do we think we can get through the rest of the next few minutes?
We're on to the classified part, so it's a lot shorter. Other than the very last question, there's not a lot of variation in this. Go on to the next one. They had these eleven things. They asked to rank and order priority. Salaries, once again. It's a big deal.
I told Caleb that it was very important that we make sure and share very explicitly the classified data because if we don't, it feels like we only care, I, I don't wanna send a message to our employees that we're only talking about in these budget considerations, only about our teachers. We're trying to recognize all of our employees.
Both of these surveys were created with input from the, from the associations. And so these are questions that they specifically wanted to ask the classified employees. Once again, a rank order question for their preferred options, increase in salary schedule. And then a follow-by step, increase on the schedule and a one-time bonus. And then would you like continue to receive, to continue receiving the food voucher in November? Do they want to? Yes.
Don't take away the food voucher. And do we have flexibility though for people who don't? Like there were some comments in there around like specific food constraints.
Oh.
It's just a gift, it's a gift certificate for me for a grocery store. They can buy vegetables, fruits, turkey, ham. There's, there's a wide variety of things they can get.
Next one was a free response question, what would make them feel more valued in the district? In these open-ended questions, you started getting more comments about part-time status and insurance for part-time employees, those types of things. Priorities they feel like should be considered during negotiations for the classified employees. Number four, I think, is.
Looking for a longevity bonus, similar to what we gave teachers.
Yeah. And then six, the job security for hourly, kind of came up a bunch. And the last, I think the last question is just if they knew about the one-time longevity enhancement. And there's a lot of factors they can go into why these, these responses are the way that they are depending on what type of employer, what department, what location they work on. Then same question that we'd asked the other, on the other survey. I believe that's the end. Is that the last one line? Yeah. So we'll get, we can get this to you. So you guys have this and then you have the full reports as well.
Thank you, Caleb. Thank you for putting that into precise format for us. All right, our final items for the study session, we will just move to the business meeting. Do we have a motion to adjourn our study session?
Can I make one comment? Sorry. My son just texted me that Hutch is called to the Sydney, Australia Mandarin speaking, starting in October.
Thank you for that. Okay. Congrats to Hutch, our student board member, and we have a motion to adjourn session. Okay. Thank you, board member Paul, and we will convene in approximately seven minutes.